Then we said.
Yep, we're 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 rolling.
Lessons.
The speed. Okay, good evening and welcome to the Village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees Meeting Work Session for September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. I need a motion to open the meeting.
Exactly.
All in favor, all right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go out of order because there are folks. What what is usually our protocol is that we take volunteers first and then we take staff. So they can go home and eat and then we go back to the regular order of the meeting. So the first item on the agenda that I'm gonna take is the library. So I was. Jerry, you had a meeting with the library?
We did, Mayor.
You fill us in on the details of said meeting.
Myself, Laura LaSalle, Deputy Mayor Lou Young met with Richard and Ellen and Jennifer. Last week at some point to discuss preliminarily the an overview of their budget and what they're looking at as well as possible solutions to some of the questions that came up here at the last Board of Trustees meeting. Specifically, one of the questions, Mayor, that you had, which was, can you tell us how you're gonna pay the TAM back? Another question I think that Lou had was, or maybe I think he had a lot of questions, but but one of the questions was, you know, what's the game plan, right? That was an overall question and I'm sorry, I can't remember if others had quite a miss. But we sat down and we worked things out and already.
So be on in the bed.
Okay, good, that's fine. So we went through line by line, their budget, their ability to cut the budget, but we're tricking and other methods. I think we've come up with, or they have come up with, actually it's us, we came up with two options that Ellen is prepared to present to the board. So if you wanna call one of the Ellen's up, I think they're ready.
One or two Ellen's, please. Hi, Ellen.
Hi, boy. No, yes.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. And residents of the Village of Mamaronek, good afternoon. I'm gonna give them a generalized statement and then Ellen Paltman gives these specific. Okay, last May, I spoke with the board, the areas and the Mamaronek community to explain the events that came to light about a financial situation in early February and provide updates. At that meeting, I spoke about four accounting practices as a theft of a former employee. I outlined how the board took immediate action and when we discovered a misappropriation of funds, the board took ownership with a lack of control and vowed to do a better job overseeing and very large finances of the library. Two weeks ago at a village board session, it was alleged that we didn't take this seriously, the financial situation of the library. And I wanna state unacritically that this couldn't be farther from the truth. Besides working twenty-four seven to clear our finances in order, which Ellen Paltman will address in details, we have completed the following. We put new financial controls through to make, recommended by Noraki Smith, Connor Davies, the New York State Controller's Office, going to go to stand. The new controls have been implemented and are available on our website. And I'd like to read the last paragraph that Noraki Smith wrote in their public statement to the trustees. During our work, we identified library internal controls that required strengthening and we had been consulting with the trustees, management and SCAP and developing new processes and improved control. Implementing an improved control structure will result in enhanced governance and oversight structure. We will continue to work closely with the trustees to design and implement an improved control environment for the long term government of the library. Right. In addition to that, we listed our monthly financial summaries that you requested on our website, listed the past audits on our website, hired a qualified bookkeeper, cleaned up the incorrect journal entries, which caused the misreporting from years past with help from Noraki Smith. Sent all relevant documents to the insurance company for our claim of theft, audit and legal fees. Will continue to aggressively pursue every possible way to retrieve money owed to our library. We formed a financial team with expertise in nonprofit organizations. We created a new budget for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and we will detail our savings in a minute. And how to how we propose to pay back the TAM. We formulated a budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. It has not yet been approved by the board. That will be done in November and we're still working on it.
Just let me use the group twenty-four, twenty-five budget gets approved in December, is that right?
Yeah, by the public, by the public. And we created a variety of venues for getting donations, including grant applications for both operations and programs due to law to our loss of deposits. We completed a forensic auditor's report along with all relevant information sent to the Westchester District Attorney's Office for their ongoing investigation, which they are hopefully gonna complete by the end of the year. At this point, I wanna thank the Mamaronek community, our friends, our family, our business community, for their incredible kindness and support of the library since February. In this era of outrage, and yes, we do hear your anger, there has been a remarkable outpouring of monetary and verbal support. We appreciate the support of the village board, Mayor Murphy. After all, we all share the same goal. We wanna make sure that the library, which began a hundred years ago, will continue to serve the patrons in our community for the next one hundred years. We were voted most highly rated municipal service by the Mamaronek residents and we will continue to provide a public space where everyone is welcome, be a part of a community and encounter new ideas. A little plug, on October twelfth, we are celebrating the library's one hundredth anniversary at the Ellen Theater. Thank you, Ellen Theater. Please go to our website to buy your ticket for this remarkable evening. Five nationally known authors, including James McBride is on the bestsellers list and Rupert Holmes. Yes, your tickets are deductible and all the money raised will go to operations, programs and books. Thank you, thank you and thank you. I don't think we could have moved forward with this overwhelming task to right the ship and make Mamaronek Library the center of the community without your encouragement, without your generosity and without your support. And now Ellen Paltman, who has been working twenty-four seven.
Um, all right, so I'm gonna be repeating a little bit of what Ellen just said, but to reinforce the current issue. It's mostly due to misreporting and those were the journal entries that Noraki Smith has helped us clean up to get rid of that issue. All right, so a slight recap on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that was approved in last December to go into effect this June. That was relying on eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars while our general fund balance that unfortunately did not exist. So we did rework the budget that got approved in May, which still left the deficit of three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. We are projecting by the end of this year, and hopefully this number will grow, that the deficit will be way down. So year to date, we've reduced two hundred and fifteen thousand of the three fifty-six. That's based on reduced salary expenses, excluding benefits, like you can do that kind of calculation. But we had two full-time resignations. We are not replacing them as two full-time employees. We are hiring two part-time employees. For the first quarter of this fiscal year, so starting June one, we've raised forty-one thousand five hundred in donations and there's some other increased income, other accounts, so our income's up slightly. And we have a donation pledge of an additional fifty thousand dollars. So that all adds up to two fifteen to close that gap. That leaves us with another hundred and forty-one thousand to go and we'll see how we keep chipping away at that. Okay, first quarter results, our first quarter results are very positive. The bottom line is four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars better than planned, but don't get excited. The library's income is three hundred and forty-eight thousand ahead of plan, but that is mostly due to the three hundred thousand dollars that we received in June. That was not part of the budget. So we're really forty-eight thousand today in income. The remaining increases, you know, various expense items, income items, so donations and other income items. So expenses are below plan by a hundred and sixteen thousand. A variety of categories, but the chunk that will be named throughout the year is thirty-nine thousand in salaries and thirteen thousand in payable tax. The rest is really due to timing, you know, for building maintenance, things like that. You don't know when you're gonna need that. Non-Ed bills are much higher in the winter, you know, lower now, so that's gonna vary, but the salary giveback is a solid giveback that we will be counting throughout the rest of the year. Progress to date, so since our May twenty-second update, Ellen spoke about the information that's on our website. There is a tab called Financials and under the Financials tab, you'll see our monthly financial summaries, past audit reports, the controls, the updates we provided in May, the updates we're providing today will be posted there as well. We've implemented a whole slew of new financial controls. We've been meeting with the library staff on them regularly. In fact, I was in there today because of one of the controls. I went in to improve all the bills, looking at the invoices and comparing it to the audit bills to go to the board meeting tomorrow night to make sure everything is good. And no questions on any of the invoices. We've hired a part-time bookkeeper with a lot of experience and I've already seen the improvement in our monthly P and L's and how things are reported. It's much better in the right categories than what we had previously.
Ellen P and L, just to define P and L for people.
Sorry, profit must statement. Something important reporting, I apologize. The forensic audit is complete. They have confirmed what our regular auditors confirmed. It was bad journal entries that caused this mess. And the forensic orders have shared their results with the Westchester County DA's office. Our legal, our labor attorney has also been working in with the Westchester County DA's office, so they're all working together. As Ellen mentioned, we're working with the insurance company to recoup whatever funds we can. We've also been working very closely with the Westchester County DA's office. Many of the staff members have been involved with interviews. The board agreed to stay closed on Sundays. We realize some people object to this, but right off the bat, that was a forty thousand dollar a year save. And at this point in time, it's something we felt we had to do. We will be listening to the feedback to see how severe this is, to see what we could do to bring it back if it's required. Or how soon we can bring it back. We've eliminated all overtime except for extreme emergencies, you know, like an alarm going off in the middle of the night, you know, when somebody has to come in. And we've already seen that drop tremendously. We're going to be reviewing all of the contracts that the library has, whether it's elevator maintenance or heating and air conditioning, whatever contract we have, that's controlling, or it's a regular scheduled payment, we wanna make sure we're getting the best deal we can, best price for the services we're getting. Since April, the library has received over fifty-five thousand in donations, excluding the fifty thousand dollar pledge. And I checked right before coming in, we're fifty-nine thousand. So thanks to our generous supporters, that number seems to keep growing. I spoke about, I'll do another plug about our centennial celebration. We've been spending a lot of time working on that. I do wanna make everyone aware that our tax dollars are not paying anything for this. We have local business sponsors who are presenting sponsors of the event. So that money is coming a hundred percent from the donations. There's a fundraising committee that's being formed and they're planning out events throughout the year. We've also reached out to charitable foundations in Mamaronek and Larchmont to see if they would be willing to make any donations or provide grants. We received one so far. I was told a couple of meetings. I'm thinking about it and we're waiting to hear from the rest. Hopefully it's all good news. This one is definitely, let's all keep our fingers crossed and pray and wish and whatever. We applied for a grant that's an annual grant. It's given to one library a year based on services provided to the community and that grant is worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We will know the results of that in November. So if all of you could, you know, do whatever prayers you can, you know, fingers crossed, that would be terrific if we were the recipient of that. And we also now have a co-treasurer who's acting as an advisor to us, who's volunteering his time. And I'll be introducing him later. Next, audit status. So when I spoke two weeks ago, I mentioned that the twenty-two audit would be finalized by the end of that week. We were expecting the representation letter. We still have not received it. We followed up and it's in progress. We're hoping we're getting it this week. So we're waiting for the twenty-two audit to be finalized and then we'll start the twenty-three audit year on twenty-three. Now into the big discussion, TAM needs. So in order to maintain our library operations, we were requesting a dispersment this month for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are hoping the December dispersment of two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars will not be needed. That this last one is it. Jerry briefly spoke to the meeting that we all had. That was this past Thursday. We went through the draft twenty-four, twenty-five budget. My primary goal was to make Jerry and trustee Young comfortable that we were headed in the right direction and really had our arms around all of our finances and I believe I did that.
Did that.
Okay, just making sure. You never know. Because I have in here, the village representatives were in agreement, so I just wanna make sure I'm not stating. Going on our website. And that draft budget, which I have not, Jennifer and I have not discussed with the library board yet, that's on the agenda for tomorrow, includes a six percent expense reduction, six point oh eight, coupled with a six percent tax increase. And the six percent tax increase is what we did last year as well. And the second question that we were going to be answering at that meeting was taking a look at the projected cash flow to explain how we could be paying the TAM back, given our current financial situation. So the cash flow that I presented had to pay back one point two million, which would be two TAM dispersments plus interest in June and we would only be able to do that if we received an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollar TAM next June. So if we go back to April, when we first spoke to the board about TAMS, we thought we would need multiple TAMS and we thought this might need to go on for multiple years, but based on the cash flow that we were looking at, the June TAM of four hundred and fifty would be the last TAM. So it would be multiple years.
The June of next year.
The June of twenty-four TAM, yeah, would be the last one. So while we were discussing that, Jerry and Augie came up with another thought. So we really have two options around the TAMS. One is the TAM that I just talked about before, four hundred and fifty thousand in June. So continuing with the TAM business, the way we initially thought. If we go down that road, the library will continue to have reduced services and we'll be running on bare bones until we get all of that in order. The option presented by Jerry and Augie was that the village pays back the TAM in full in June and the library repays the village over three years, plus thirty thousand dollars in interest payments to the village. That option provides much more financial stability to the library, kind of puts us on level footing and it enables us to very slowly start bringing back services like bond plus.
Well, would that be like two percent about, two percent interest, the vig?
Two and a half.
Okay.
Which is the rate that we would pay.
To borrow.
It's to borrow, right?
And again, option two has not been discussed with the library board because we haven't had our meeting, so that is being discussed tomorrow night. You know, I know we have a couple of board members here are getting our perfect. So those are those two options. And then finally, so I mentioned that we have a co-treasurer who's acting in advisory capacity. His name is Richard Axe. He's right here. President of Larchmont and he volunteered to help us out. He heard about the trouble we were having and he thought his expertise could be beneficial and it is. He's got a solid financial background. A former investment banker and a higher education CFO and very familiar with not-for-profit accounting. Richard, is there anything you wanna add?
No.
Nope, okay.
What's it in?
Richard Axe.
Nice to meet you, sir. Thanks for jumping in.
Who lives in the wrong village.
We'll coax you over to our side.
Do you have any questions?
No, I I I was briefed by trustee Young and by the village manager and by Augie and you have satisfied, you know, their requirements and our requirements. You know, my goal in all of this was to make sure the library never closed and to make sure we got paid back. And it seems that both of those are now doable. And the residents will never lose service. And that was, that was paramount to me because I know how vital that institution is to the community.
It's the library will. So just the options are, will we name more painful or less painful?
If Ellen, if you want to explain a little bit of the cash flow that you showed, there's a little bit of a cash flow issue in the, I guess, winter months, right?
December, January. So in the cash flow, there were two months where we were in the red, December and January, and that's one of the reasons why I'm very busy tracking the monies recouped against this year's deficit, because that will certainly give us more funds to apply to that.
That's after the budget and before you, after the budget vote and before the tax dispersment in February? Is that why it's like that?
Yeah. Yeah, timing.
Yes, it's, yeah.
So it's now down to approximately a hundred thousand dollars of a negative cash flow. Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Better than what we saw Thursday.
Yeah. But again, it's, you know, something that we'll keep chipping away at. The October fundraiser is critical for that. Local foundations are, you know, critical for that. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant would be huge.
I did pay all my late fees.
Thank you. So you're one of the reasons why our incomes. Good man. We appreciate it. Any other questions?
Would?
I'm pretty happy.
I just wanted to say that, you know, two weeks ago, I said, alarmed everybody was saying, I don't think perhaps you were taking this seriously. And my my point was that the, as the responsible entity here, that we had to have more information and and our, and our very capable staff, you know, needed to be more fully informed and 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 forward to date. That has happened. We had the meeting Thursday. I I witnessed it and 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 saw that with that information, Augie was able to come up with a solution that that analysis to help the library even more than had previously been anticipated. That's all this trustee ever wanted and and I'm I'm pleased that the that you're you're you've gone to six percent on on the reduction. And I think, you know, perhaps I could, I could, you know, see that that you would have a grounds for for even a larger tax increase if you wanted to go with that, but that's 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 entirely up to you. But I am, I'm very satisfied and I think with the with the good financial news that we've had recently, I guess we'll get to a little bit later, that we were able to able to do more and I think this is exactly what I was looking for. So I appreciate Ellen, I appreciate your hard work and everybody's hard work and 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 I think I think you you you've you've filled in all the blanks.
Yes, thank you.
Repeating offer that I've made previously, anytime you, Augie, Laura, wanna go over stuff, just let me know. You know, nothing is being held secret.
They have numbers and Ellen left out some numbers that she kept some numbers, let me put it that way, for contingencies to make sure that we're covered. They were covered, not us, they were covered on certain items that creep up on you and get serious overnight, like building maintenance. Right, like that kind of stuff. We deal with that all the time. So it was a very responsible preliminary budget that they were working on. So we were very happy to see that. And and I don't know if it's Augie's on yet, but he's a genius because he came up with a plan that could help them during their December, January dry period to 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 make sure that payroll continues and everything else continues because, you know, when people work, they expect to get paid every couple of weeks and.
I know I do, so I guess.
Thanks, Ellen. Thank you.
Okay, so this is on, this is on for the regular meeting. And it seems to me that the board is all comfortable with it. So I I I would encourage you not to stay for, if you wanna stay, you know, it looks like smooth sailing. And I thank you all for your hard work and I know, believe me, I I I know what it's like to be focal point of questions and all kinds of public scrutiny. And I know it sometimes is difficult, but you all handled it with as much grace as you could and you came out the other end. So congratulations and hopefully this will just be a bump in the road when we get to two hundred years.
Hopefully by two hundred, it will be long forgotten.
Well, and it's a, it's a relief.
No, I will be.
I mean, it's a relief because when we were first talking about the scenario, so we were gonna be continually continuously taking out TAMS because they're due in one, it's due in June. So the fact that that that's that we don't have to do that and that you'll be solvent earlier is a credit to the amount of effort that you did to. It's the opposite of what was happening before, so thank you.
And the initial beauty of it is that the the interest stays in the village, doesn't.
Do you pay JP Morgan Chase? I don't think they need our money.
Nope.
Or we can do it.
There you go.
Okay, great.
Thank you, library.
Okay. I wanna go with Mr. An. Mr. An, you are here tonight to talk about Columbia Firehouse.
Yes.
Why, Jen?
Have a good evening, everyone.
Yeah, they're not interested.
They're not interested. Thank you all.
Mr. An, so a few months ago, we approached the board for fixing that app happen at Columbia Firehouse. The board approved, I believe it was close to eight hundred thousand. close to eight hundred thousand post fixes.
Mm hmm.
Um. That being said, we go over to thirty five thousand dollar mark to go out to bid. So this is just basically a uh contract with EnviroSpace to draw the building, draw the plans, seal the bid, send the bid out, and secure contractor to perform the the work we need done.
Okay, so he's preparing a bid documents.
Yes.
And the specification.
Yes.
Okay.
Roof windows, um lentils, uh masonry work. Everything, okay.
The stucco work that has to be done?
Yes.
You can see some stucco problems when you walk by.
The stucco is starting to come off the sun frame of the building.
How old's the building, you know of him?
No.
Eighteen hundred?
Probably.
Nineteenth century building.
Yeah.
But it wasn't always stucco.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the the addition was in the fifties. Because required the second piece of property.
We're doing roof, uh soffit work, window work, stucco work, the lental work. Um some interior work because we're replacing the windows.
Yeah.
Which is uh it's not plaster, it's not sheet rock, it's actual masonry.
We should film an episode of this old firehouse.
Yeah, great idea.
I don't know, Bob Beal is going to end down.
You can do it.
You're a Bob Beal.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have any questions for our friend, Mr. An? Just so folks at home know, uh Jeff An is the uh superintendent of the parks department, and he also doubles in that role as the person who takes care of all the village properties and buildings. And uh we appreciate that, and uh Jeff has a lot of expertise in construction uh which uh I know he inherited from his dad. Uh so uh we thank you for that.
Thank you, guys, thank you for the support.
Thanks for taking care of.
Everybody fine with this, right? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Jeff, thanks, pal. All right, the next.
It's up to you.
What are you here for?
Me?
Yeah.
All right, let's 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 get to them real quick. This way, you know, because I, yeah, because I I forgot, I figured you with Mrs. Mrs. in support, but then.
You're a library fan.
Okay, and just the young men in the back. Uh I I know you're from the uh, you know, the 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 program, the okra with the kids and you're not on the agenda tonight, but we will get to you.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
I don't want to, I know you put on a nice shirt. And you came down, and I appreciate that, but I I don't think we can get to you tonight. All right, you could you could learn some more okra here. But I just don't want, I don't want to keep you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Do you get extra credit for coming to meetings from?
We're happy.
It is a nice shirt. Uh, okay, now what are the environmental things on here? What's what's stormwater or?
Climate aware, solar.
Yeah, that's.
Solar and and leaf blow.
Okay, let me let me just get to the chief and then I'll get to you. Okay, I'm sorry, was that? Uh chief. You you hear about the uh the law?
And I've been working with Mary uh on regarding special events and block parties.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that one there?
Do you want to go through it? The changes?
So I don't think this part of the.
Oh, sorry.
Mary had interviewed.
It's three E.
Documented.
Thank you.
So basically, what we want to do is we wanted, we wanted to broaden the description for block parties and special events, um so it would allow for the police department to have proper planning and staffing for events, but then also for the the permit holders, um the different responsibility and expectations um about the event that they're going to have.
Good. Does anybody have any questions, concerns about the proposed law?
I'd just like to hold off until we um speak when we are, we speak with Board of Commissioners, uh Police Commissions.
Okay.
Is there a rush, you have like a timeline?
No, no.
Okay.
And we're 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 meeting uh.
October sixteen.
October sixteenth. Okay.
Thank you. You have a couple of questions, can I just ask them?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so one is on E, um is so it it's about whether alcohol is going to be served. Um but we don't allow that in parks, so that's that would also require a permit from the village for our trustees, right? It's just an extra.
Right, so I spoke with the village manager about that, so I guess the the question kind of came up and I think that it's not a reasonable expectation to think that a person is going to have a block party or not.
Right.
So I think as part of that and part of the permit application is going to advise will alcohol be on the premise, not served in the street because that always was not allowed? But if there's going to be alcohol present, then I think that's something that we need to know because that's probably has to be approved.
Okay. And so.
Is that at a park or at the street, you you said?
It's sort of both. It it like that, so I it wasn't clear to me. It says applicant, an applicant for a permit for a block party or special event must be at least eighteen years old, if alcohol will be served at the event, the applicant must be at least twenty one years old, but if it's in a park, there's a special, there's there's already a process, or this is just if it's like.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
So that was one, and then my other question was just um where are the fees set out? Because it says that if the permit is denied, the manager must advise the applicant in writing of the reason for denial of the application, and the village clerk must refund the fee. But it seems to me that if you don't issue the permit, you're not going to collect the fee, so you might want to tell people why it was denied, but you wouldn't have a fee at that point, that that was just.
Yeah. Perfect.
So can you pass him? Uh Robert, the mic, sorry.
It's okay, good.
The fee is paid by the time of the application.
Okay.
So I don't want to do, we're already in the same position, we're in the building permit fees that we have.
Our three permits left. Twenty five bucks.
So that's.
They're like approve it or deny it.
But that's twenty five dollars.
Yeah, right, I know.
This is a bigger.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger amount.
Okay.
Yeah, let's and I, to to uh further to Lonnie's point, let's let's talk about the rest of it uh when we meet in October.
Okay, so you want us to put this on the October twenty third meeting? On the work side?
No, just October sixteenth.
I was going to talk about it in terms of the work session.
Because right now you're board trustees, and at that meeting you're going to be police commissioners, so.
Right.
So if you talk about it on the sixth.
We we can go in and out.
Okay, that's fine.
We just noticed the meeting differently.
Okay, so we'll do it on the sixth.
But you always, you always notice it as a board trustees meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you may.
I just.
Yeah, you never notice it as a board of police commissioners.
Okay, so there'll be an item on that meeting as well as the other items.
What's the other item, chief?
So the other one is uh a resolution for me to attend annual conference in association to the police. Um so they offer this one time a year. Um in addition to networking, they offer, they offer several different topics. Um specifically this year, it's about pre- pre employment evaluations, failure to supervise, failure to train, um constitutional policing, officer wellness, so it's an important conference, so I would just consider it as a good statement, so it's.
That's on to the regular media, yeah, yeah.
And then the last one um is about hey um canine insurance, something to that effect. So I was just kind of made aware of this, so I'm not exactly sure what the topic is.
I asked me, what did I?
Yeah.
Do you would would you mind me talking?
Yeah, no, absolutely, I can tell you a little bit of what I found out today.
Okay, awesome, so it was brought to me by um one of the residents, um Mr. Dickerson, and she asked about um does the canines have insurance after they retire? Um and I said, I don't know, when I look, and she's like, I don't think they do, and I said, I did ask Jerry if it if it um if they do, and he said that they don't, and why we cannot, should not have, I I'm asking why should, why they they should have it, I'm saying they that they, I think that they should, um considering they work to an employee, um and we respect all animals around here, um but especially the ones that work just as hard as any person, um and if the owner, the person who takes care of the dog afterwards, if that's a large lump sum of money if they don't have insurance, and I don't think that it's appropriate for them to have to cover that cost.
Sure, so historically with the village of Mamaroneck, um we always need for any kind of care while the dog has been active in service, um we've never had any kind of insurance either while the officer and the dog has been active or when they've been retired. So I pulled around to a couple of municipalities today. So uh four to be specific, um there was one jurisdiction that offers insurance while the team is active.
Mm hmm.
Then there was another one that just pays, doesn't have insurance, but pays for any medical after the dog is retired. So you know, I think it's one of those things like.
What about the other two?
So the other two has no, they don't do any pension, so you know, I think it's it's almost like car insurance, right, when you pay for something, but you never know if you're going to have to use it, so I think it's probably going to be more like a plus analysis to see how much do we actually spend while they're a team versus paying for insurance and deductibles a year that way, um you know, in terms of retirement, you know, historically, you know, a dog can live anywhere, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Um so in terms of maintenance after the team retires or insurance after the team retires, um if you know, you were open to that, it wouldn't be for fifty years, it would be for, you know, two, three, four, whatever it may be, um. So it's, you know, it's it's paying insurance or paying medical or not paying anything, and I think it comes down to kind of like what Leon said about, you know, this is if it's he or she was a member of service as a canine team versus is it property, so it's a property or is it, you know, a team of retired member of service? So I think there's different ways to to look at it.
The municipality or the the town, village, whatever, city, it did did they say that it was in cost effective for them to add it, what did they, did they have any pros or cons?
So again, there was the one person or mixed party that I spoke with, the insurance that they had, it was eleven hundred dollars a year, but with a one thousand dollar deductible. So for us, um you know, for for this year, we would have probably exceeded that cost, but prior couple of years we didn't. So again, it's one of those things where do you pay for and hope you don't use it, or do you not get it, and then if unfortunately, if the dog does get sick and, you know, extreme medical bills, then that's that's an issue, now we do work with, you know, confirmed providers that do offer, you know, law enforcement discounted rates. Um so that that is a help for sure. Um so I again, it's six, one almost half dozen, the other one, you know, what you want to do in terms of insurance or just paying, and then whether you continue to pay or not.
Thoughts?
I I I just, I I'm a little concerned about the legality of paying for dogs' health insurance, I I don't know if that's you know, I I I think that's something we should probably check out.
I mean, there are plenty of, you know, insurance companies out there that do pay for.
I know, but I I I know there are dog health insurance, but I'm saying as a municipality, that being an ex, a legitimate expense to taxpayers.
Forty years of doing this, the mic is on.
Mike.
Forty years of doing this, no one's ever asked you that question.
Can it, can it, can we look into it because honestly, if that dog was a service dog or not like a service, how do you, what is the proper term?
No, it's technically a member of service, a dog of service is considered a police canine.
Yeah, and if we're paying people insurance after they left or retired, I don't, and then I'm and I'm also thinking it's not long term, because like you said, a dog's life is not like it's fifty years past its retirement, it's maybe two to three years, but also when dogs get sick, especially dogs who are active duty, you know, where they're jumping and they're they're, you know, they're doing a lot more, possibly more than the average dog. There could be a time where they 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 have medical expense, and then put that on the 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 owner, the now retired owner. I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out there, you can make the decision. But if if, but I understand your.
Yeah, I would just like that, uh you know, research.
I just.
Non-reasonable request.
Solution in search of a problem. You know, I mean, it's 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 never come up, um you know.
Is is the first police dog still alive? Frank's?
And and again, that's something where the dog was working until he passed, so he never really even retired, so that's a situation where that wouldn't even have come into play.
Hmm.
Um so.
But now we have retired.
So now we have one retired canine, I believe Vincent is nine, maybe nine or ten. Um and then we have, you know, our current.
So the dog that died in service.
Correct.
Did the village pay for his funeral? Is his cremated, did it pay for anything? Because I'm just saying.
Yeah, to be honest, I did not know that.
All right. Just say, I'm just asking. It's just interesting, but.
He had, he had one life, he was about ten or eleven blessings.
Here's the dog. Well, that was the first, uh, Vareska's dog was the first.
Correct, yeah, canine, yeah. Thank you.
Because of course, back then, I I remember, back then when I was a trustee, I'm sure you remember this too, the police officer would come to your house and deliver the mail.
Yep.
Deliver your packet, not the mail.
Every day, no, every, no, every day, the mail. Whatever came into the village, you got a copy of it, and every day, the policeman would knock on the door, and Frank would be there sometimes with with his dog, and my youngest was about four or five at the time, and he loved it.
Look at that.
This just shows you how 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 much things have changed, this was before, you know, emails where you pick with us and all that, I'm sure Catherine remembers.
Friendly village.
That's amazing. That's amazing.
Why are the cops at Murphy's house again?
Yeah, well.
That's what would be, that's what would be all over the internet now. All right, uh we'll 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 find out from uh our esteemed attorney and see where we go. Thank you, chief. Let's let's just go down the uh, get back to the agenda and we'll we'll get to the uh it's nice stuff. C and D. It's not a lot, okay, development moratorium for properties located in a federally mapped floodplain. Uh back a while back, a year and a half ago, right, no, right, right after the flood, uh in uh I think it was February of uh twenty twenty two, uh I proposed a moratorium in the C one and C two district in the floodplain. My thinking at the time was that we wanted to, I I thought that it would be prudent to remove the infill housing provision in the C one and C two district that lies within the floodplain. Uh and my thinking at the time was that we didn't need any more apartment buildings that would be subject to uh you know, being enveloped by a flood and uh having to have our emergency service workers rescue people out of apartments, buildings, and we had, we had situations uh in both oh seven and in twenty one uh where people in like the Avalon and stuff like that, buildings like that, you know, were calling up and asking, you know, they smelled gas and there were there were times when we just couldn't get to people. So uh that that was my original thinking, uh the board of the time uh went back and forth about different issues. Uh and now so we never really pulled the trigger on it. Now, uh.
It was a vote, wasn't it?
I remember.
You ended up voting, there was a moratorium that ended up happening, it was very short.
No, no, I don't think.
No, it wasn't.
It voted it down.
We voted it down.
Which ordered the, what, three, two?
Never. It it never got, it was, never got to. Yeah, you were going to bring it back in a different form and.
Right, that was voted, that was denied three, two, I think you're right.
Yeah.
I mean, uh you. Did you vote?
Yeah, yeah, I voted, I voted.
I think you gave me a sympathy vote.
Yeah, yeah, it was a sympathy vote because I I I have reservations about.
Uh now, there there's a request uh from residents to have a moratorium in the flood zone uh until we strengthen our flood laws, which is understandable, uh just to.
Are you, are we still, I'm sorry, I'm go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Let me just talk about where we are.
Mm hmm.
I just want to explain to folks what a moratorium is. I just want to explain to folks what a moratorium is. A moratorium isn't just a vote by the board, bang, we're gonna do this tonight. A moratorium is a law. The law has to be proposed, the law has to be noticed, there has to be a public hearing. Uh it it's it's a process that has to play out. Now, I'm not saying I'm against that, I'm just saying people need to know what the process is. And uh you know, then what we need to do as a board is really define what we're looking to do, or at least the areas we are looking to affect. Uh right now, if if it's the flood zone, that means that nobody uh in Washingtonville, nobody in uh in uh the industrial area can take out a building permit.
That's just, and then is that considered the, those areas are only one considered? Or is that just because that's the the C one, C two?
No, no, that that is, that that is the floods, the flood zones, you know, most of Washingtonville, most of the industrial area. Areas also that uh by rivers, uh al- also it it would be. Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, it would also cover coastal areas, right? Cause they they flood.
I'm just being, I'm just.
Then yes, that would be, that would cover riverine and coastal area.
So it'll be most of the village. So that that that's, that's a lot. Uh and so if you do that, I think it as trustee Young has pointed out, it has to be of a very short duration. Because you you you're telling almost all the village that they can't take out a building permit. Unless they're doing interior work and you know, maybe if they're getting a a new bathroom or a new uh. I don't even, how how's that word? If you're doing interior work, can you take out a permit? Okay, so there's a lot to consider here. Uh I I I think that if we do it, and if we if we can delineate how we're gonna do it and where we're gonna do it and not just use a shotgun here. It might be the good exercise for three months because as you see, uh item B on the agenda is the strengthening of the village code raised stormwater, which is what uh people were asking us to do during the moratorium. And uh I proposed doing this in May and uh the staff has worked up a an interesting proposal. And uh so that 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 that's where I am with this. I'm I'm not against it, but I just need to see, you know, where we're gonna do it, how we're gonna do it. And uh you know, try not to uh hurt people, uh especially people who've been waiting for a long, long time, I know, and some applications, they've been waiting for years. Uh and now to tell them that uh they can't have a building permit seems like we just keep moving the goalposts.
Well.
And that's that's not really fair.
I mean, typically, it wouldn't be something that's already in the works. I mean, it depends on how Bob writes the law, but if people are already in the the application process, that typically isn't, but when we did the moratorium in two thousand eighteen, we did not. If you if you were in the works with a permit, you were able to keep going.
If you had a permit.
Or if you were in the in the application process, if you were even before a board. Um right? I think, yeah. But the and the mistake, I think the mistake we made with that was that we adopted the law, but we didn't have a scope of work. So then we went back and hired planning consultants and stopped working on the comp plan. So I think, and so I think what we need to do is if we're gonna do this, our comp plan actually suggests that we do this to create a floodplain overlay zone, and I think the stormwater law is a huge part of what that would be. So I think we need to sort of figure out what this, what the physical scope of moratorium would be and you know, what it applies to and like, how do we, how can we manage it? Can we, is it, can we, is it something we can stage? Is it something we can do all at once? I mean, Greg, Greg may be sorry he came back.
But I just, I just want to point out that with in P L L C, when we had the moratorium, I had proposed a very limited scope. I proposed uh an F A R lowering and uh then uh then it it grew exponentially, uh where where people uh started talking about setbacks, people started talking about uh different overlay zones and so the 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 initial uh idea and impetus probably would have been a lot easier than what we actually did. So it 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 wasn't that it wasn't focused, it was focused until we started looking at laws. And then it got unfocused and I remember many times uh saying during that process. Uh what we're doing isn't covered by the moratorium. This isn't what we talked about when we proposed the moratorium. But we we continue to pace, but that that's unfortunately water over the dam.
I I don't think that the focus of our study was decided before we adopted the law, and I think that's what we need to do. If we're gonna adopt a moratorium law, we'd have to know what the scope of it is and what we're gonna end up studying before we actually adopt the law. Or as we talk about what law to adopt.
So what we, I I would imagine what we we would talk about doing a strengthening of the called raised stormwater, which was one B, right? Is everybody?
Yeah, yeah, I I mean, I I we keep talking about studies. I think we know what we're talking about. This is not uh something that we're not uh familiar with. We know what the outlines of a stormwater um uh management is and what what uh what needs to be done to the building codes. And um I would ask uh the staff, I mean, how how soon could we have a strengthened uh um uh code for stormwater uh before us? Uh if we if we found a community that's already kind of done this and we and we.
What? There's one before us tonight.
One before you tonight, that's ninety-five percent. And the other five percent is what you want. We're ready.
Okay, well then, then then it would seem that the the only rea- the only reason for a moratorium would be to light a light a fire under that process. So if we're already there, the moratorium would seem to be moved.
Well, I think a reason for a moratorium is just to maintain the status quo while we're changing the law so that once, I mean, it's, you know, even if this law is ni- it's ninety-nine point nine 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 percent there and we decide that in two weeks, we're gonna schedule a public hearing on it. I guarantee that there's a secret process, there's gonna be public input, so we're not gonna adopt the law in two weeks. Um so and we're not gonna adopt a moratorium law probably in two weeks either, cause we don't have that before us. But it's the the reason for having, for adopting a moratorium law is just to, you know, maintain the status quo so nothing happens while we're completing this law.
Why don't, why don't we do this?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I I don't know if you're about to wrap it up. With with the, I I believe the S L R study and one of the suggestions is, you know, literally, you know, taking back land so that we are preventing flooding and everything else. There are clearly areas in our community that just can't build on it, we just can't. But we, I also understand that zoning is kind of, it puts us in a bind, like if I was, for example, if I I wasn't here when they built the mason, but could we have stopped that? Is that something that?
Uh I was here and I was on this board and uh I was the only member of this board to vote against that zon- zoning change. Uh it was a, what was there before was Blood Brothers, it was Zone Manufacturing, which is like the rest of the other side of Fenimore Road. Uh I I I fought and I uh cajoled and I wanted it at least to be a lower density. It's that is zone the highest density. And uh it passed four to one and I tried to get people interested in it and it just didn't happen.
Could we have stopped it from happening at all?
Yeah, no, once once we changed the zoning, no.
So even before, if it just, if we made a green area, if we just thought about doing that. Could we have done that?
Yes.
We could have.
We could have, but but you know, now uh obviously the.
Now we're 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 we at, I just need a clarification.
The village will always flood.
Yeah.
They show that the houses that currently flood should be eliminated.
Yeah.
Right? And every once in a while.
No, that's what they're saying.
Right, they're like, oh, it's gonna flood anyway, so get rid of these houses. And if you get rid of one house, these other three houses won't won't flood, right? That's their, that's their theory. But for us to take back land that's vacant, that doesn't have a house, that doesn't displace family or families. I I don't, I don't see where that is.
And that, and I'm, and I guess that's what I'm saying, it's like, there's some parts that certainly do not need to be um uh built upon. And there's certain areas that we could, should and could, and hopefully, we could develop where there's already um um buildings established. So I don't know where the memoratorium has like, it's almost like, are we zigzagging with the memoratorium?
I mean, going back to the mason, it was a, I mean, I was at that meeting, it was a really bad idea to rezone and Tom was the only person who said, don't do this, but they've rezoned it. Um but even if it hadn't been rezoned, there unless the village had had the money to purchase the property and make it vacant fallow land, that was a flood retention. And and go and goes off the tax base, we really can't, we can't tell people, you cannot use your property. I mean, we can, we can limit what, we can limit, we can strengthen stormwater laws, we can limit what happens, but we can't possibly tell people that they can't develop their property. That's that's a taking, so that thing, that's the final.
And develop it within the confines of that zoning.
There are grant programs uh for acquisition, but if it's privately owned, the homeowner have to agree to it. Not, doesn't always happen.
Let let me make a suggestion here. Why don't we work in tandem? Work on a proposed moratorium and work on the village code, strengthening the village code raised stormwater. And if we get if we get a hiccup, if if we get uh a uh a a bump in the road uh on the stormwater law, then we can enact a moratorium. Does that make sense to everybody?
It does.
Except I think what's like, but let's, are we gonna talk about the scope of the market? Cause I think that we can't adapt a moratorium in two weeks or even maybe four weeks, we really have to scope it, so.
Perhaps we should ask our planner to develop a scope uh based upon would you think this was good? This this ain't Scarsdale, pal. Based based upon, you know, uh properties and life safety that is most endangered from flooding. We can use Ida.
And one one point I wanna make is seeing the status quo is not, is is not a good thing because um uh where I live, there have, there are empty buildings that were empty when I moved in, that is still empty, uh that I believe were may have been empty since the two thousand seven flood. And and there's old zoning sign, I mean, I mean, if we just cement our old mistakes in place where there are, there were there are uh property owners who wanna knock these buildings down and build something that's flood resilient and retains water. So we're 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 stopping uh improvement, im- improvement of the situation.
But.
We we, I mean, I think, I think we did that and if after the two thousand seven flood and then and then, you know, Ida happens. Ida didn't have to be as bad as it was.
We didn't, we didn't do a moratorium after the two thousand seven flood, we did a limited moratorium for C one, but I and when I say maintain the status quo, what I mean is you're not, we know that our stormwater laws aren't strong enough, so we really need to fix those laws before we encourage.
Allow all the people to build.
So that maintaining the status quo isn't saying, oh, this is great, we wanna have these empty buildings, we wanna have these not flood resistant buildings. It's just, we don't wanna permit more development until we've actually fixed this stormwater law, which we've been talking about but since before Greg left and came back.
So.
Says, well, believe me.
And then a couple of things that I just wanna bring attention to. First, if it's going to be related to just the stormwater law, it should be noted that that applies to every property within the village, yes, and not just those within.
I I understand that, I understand that, but yeah, it I think that initially, just, you know, it it the the corso uh uh belly of of it should be, you know, protecting the life and safety in areas where we know people's life, safety and property is in danger. And and it it might come to pass that we passed the changes to stormwater law before. And that will negate the need for it, but if we don't, we could fall back on this and really take a a a deeper dive.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think what I'm suggesting is, I think we're putting everything that is on the next agenda item under the umbrella of stormwater law, but it also includes um zoning and flood resiliency type of thing. So I just wanted to point out probably try and have a connection between what you're.
Yes.
What you're suggesting. Laws you're reading, you're going to review.
Yeah, we also have the floodplain development law.
And the foot make it all.
From my perspective, because we just adopted the comp plan two weeks ago, which recommends a floodplain zoning overlay, that that might be a hook to hang this on because it's it's a way of strengthening um protections for development in the flood zone. That is, that correlates with our comp plan.
Can you get started? And you 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 know uh where we kind of wanna go with this?
Yeah, I I think, I think you're focused, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, so I'll try and I think you're focused on more of the like life, safety impacts of additional.
Yes.
Buildings.
Of of additional, not of 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 development without uh uh attenuating the dangers of runoff. And Bob, can you work on this with them? You bother Mike?
And and I would be remiss if I didn't kind of just give some kind of general planning frameworks that a lot of people think about these types of issues in the planning world. Um you know, typically, when when we were talking about bios before and where you kind of wanna, you know, leave Navy or leave nature, those are usually low density locations. You know, you wanna buy out properties that that are in flood zones that have, you know, one acre zoning or or even larger lot zoning, but where you have existing established neighborhoods. Yeah, you know, the the framework is really how do we make these neighborhoods more resilient? And and that really how you should probably should be focusing, whether to capital improvement or uh improvements on raising elevated homes. Um and you know, that's kind of the approach that you would that most planners would recommend you be taking in order to uh improve resiliency in those types of neighborhoods, cause we're talking about you know, the Village of Marne, we're talking about a substantial neighborhood in the Village of Marne.
Yes, New New York State looks at this, you know, as as an academic exercise and they look at it as you know, what would I do if I had my brothers and uh I I you know, I I could just play like with a map? You know, they don't realize that it's people's lives, it's people's, you know, businesses, it's long time, uh you know, historical icons of the village. So you know, it's it's nice to be able to, you know, play in a kind of a lab, but we we have to deal with the real world. Yeah. Hopefully.
We don't wanna read a case study, we are the case.
We are the case. All right, so does everybody find we're moving the the moratorium in that direction?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we're tying it to an actual law, not a study, that's that's.
Okay, let's let's get to the next, cause that will uh strengthen the village code raised stormwater. All right, um is everybody, I'm sure has had a chance to look at this, right? The work of Mr. Cutler and Mr. Spalzino, uh in in May, I talked to Jerry, I hear at a board meeting and uh told them that we needed to uh tighten up our stormwater law as quickly as possible. And you know what? From May to September is late speed in government. And and I I appreciate uh you all taking this very seriously. Mr. Cutler or or Mr. Spalzino, can you go through the change? For those who are watching, uh the changes are in bold. And the strikeouts are things that are being taken out of the current code. Bob, just before I I I asked Mr. Cutler, uh I I just wondered, you changed all of the shalls to must? Why is that?
This is something that's been passed, it's. Modern drafting uses must instead of shall, because shall is ambiguous.
Shall is ambiguous? I remember his Ten Commandments when I was a kid.
You, you, you should, you should probably not go.
Changed laws, I tried to move to this, this modern language that a little tries to eliminate may. May is ambiguous, shall is ambiguous.
Most, okay, alright. Okay, I I was just wondering about that, and that's a, a very good explanation. Uh I'll give it to Mr. Cutler, Mr. Cutler, run us through the bold.
Okay, so um we started in the stormwater chapter, the code two ninety-four. Uh we've added definitions for hi- five hundred year and one hundred year and and, you know, those. Will be referenced throughout.
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna share this.
Uh those will be referenced um elsewhere within the code, the first reference um is soon after, but uh. Under section two um of the local laws and the stormwater code were.
Okay, just to before you get the section two, you you defined five hundred year flood. And you defined a one hundred year flood, which we're not heretofore defined in the code.
Well, not in this section of the code.
And and what, what, what I have found out through talking to our esteemed engineer. Uh I had always assumed the one hundred year flood and a five hundred year flood, a five hundred year flood was five times more intense. But it's hot, not the case at all. Uh it 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 it's like a, a reverse Richter scale.
An annual chance.
Yes, it's, it's the annual chance. Okay, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I just.
That's quite right.
Um so the, the next section, um it's related to retrofitting, uh existing properties that don't. Currently have stormwater, so most of the village was developed, um and the homes were built, uh you know, from the nineteen. A large portion in nineteen twenties, and then some more in the nineteen fifties. Uh most of the single family um and and other, you know, apartment buildings, the smaller apartment buildings, three family, those kinds of. Developments do not have any stormwater systems at all. Um so this provision doesn't force stormwater systems on those, you know, uh properties, um can't really do that. Uh but what it does is if an applicant um is proposing to. You know, put in addition or do some other type of impervious surface structure installed on the property like a pool, for for instance. Um and the cost of that addition or pool or other improvement, um that increases the impervious coverage on the lot. Is more than twenty-five percent of the value of improvement, so not the lot area. Plus the improvements value, but the assessed value of just the house.
Right.
And the structures on the site, which we, we have that data, we can get it from the assessor, the assessors in either town. So if that project costs twenty-five percent or more of that value, then they would have to treat the lot as though it was unimproved. So that's to say, they have to retrofit.
Right.
So they have roof gutters, those wouldn't then have to connect to the stormwater system, so the existing house.
Just to put real numbers on it, i- if if your, if your property. If your house, not your land, if your house was worth four hundred thousand dollars exclusive of the land, and you did a hundred thousand dollar. A hundred and one thousand dollar addition to that property, then the whole house would then have to. Comply with the hundred year storm.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's an addition, not an interior renovation.
Not an interior renovation, it also was. It's about, yeah, increasing the. So if you did a second story addition and it was over an existing first story, then that wouldn't trigger.
This is, this is based on someone who's not connected to the stormwater system, it doesn't connect to a pipe.
Uh no, this is just based on, on, no, that.
Okay, so you're gonna need to put in protect and other kinds of systems in your yard.
Whatever system meets the stormwater standards, it doesn't necessarily.
We're not dictating a system, we're just telling them they have to meet the standard.
Yeah.
And just so the people kind of understand what, it's not, we're no longer, it's no longer about just lot disturbance, it's about. Increasing the density of your property.
Um and maintaining what rains. The rain, the water right onto your property, right? So it would, the other standards would still be in effect as well. So, so if you did a patio, for instance. You would still have to treat the stormwater for that patio that's over two hundred square feet, that's standard in the code, remains in the code.
Right.
But if that patio for some reason costs, you know, hundred one thousand dollars on your. Then you would have to add your, your roof gutter, then your driveway, you'd have to have that lead to a stormwater system. Um moving on, um the next, the next item is uh increasing. So the next three, so B, C and D. Actually, just being C, really, um are increasing the storm design from twenty-five years to a hundred years.
So every property in the village. That's improved by twenty-five percent or brand new, will have to, no matter where it is, will have to. Attend to the hundred year stormwater.
Residential.
Residential, and no, and commercial too. And commercial.
It's across the board.
It's across the board, it's residential, commercial, okay, so just, I'm gonna get that out.
Correct. Um and, you know, in my discussions with, with Gino, it's not, you know, going from a twenty-five to a hundred year storm, does it mean if you would have. Had to put one, you know, infiltration chamber or full tech, you know, underground dry well, try to use as many words as possible for people to understand. Um it doesn't mean you'll have to put four additional ones, i- it depends on, you know, the soil type and, so you could, you know. Under the twenty-five year, you might have to put four, and under a hundred, you might have to put six infiltrator.
Yeah, so I was, I was looking at the chart with, I was looking at the chart with Dean, uh Gino the other day. And uh it's like, from a five hundred year storm was like twelve inches. And to a thousand year storm was fourteen inches.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it, it kind of is counterintuitive, right? You would think it'd be a lot more.
You would, you would think, but that difference that. That minor difference does still account for uh a lot of additional stormwater that has to be accounted for.
Right.
You're going from a twenty-five to a hundred, you only see there, I think twenty-five is about six point four two inches over a twenty-four hour period. The one hundred year storm, Greg, correct me, is uh just a little over two more inches, about eight and a half, almost nine. Uh and again, like Greg says, it's variable, a lot has to do with the, the permeability of the soils onsite, the size of the lot. Depth to groundwater and depth to bedrock, so there's a lot of variables, it's not just the cut dry answers.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Um let me move on, I'll skip the changes from shell to must. So the next section addresses uh zoning. So. You, you know, we've seen a number of applications uh in in the past. You know, a few months I've been here since April, um I've seen a few of these, and I know that there were other ones before I I came on where. People seek variances, um homeowners seek variances for um bringing their properties into. You know, uh a higher standard for flood compliance, so, you know, they, they were flooded during Ida or previous storms and. They're unable to.
Speak up. Talk to the back of the room.
Yeah, and they're unable to.
That's, that's a theater talk, you have a project, your voice.
They took it very literally, uh and so, and so they, they have to give variances, you know, sometimes up to, you know, three, four variances just to. You know, bring their property into uh, you know, higher standard of resiliency so that they're not worried every time it it rains, so. Um the, the changes that we put into the zoning code are kind of would, would make that variance requirement for. Properties go away essentially, so um it would make it easier to bring your property um. You know, up, up, raise it up and and not be penalized for that, so the first one is related to floor area. And uh it would exempt any horizontal areas within the flood hazard area that are below two feet above base flood elevation. And are used solely for parking vehicles, building access or storage in an area other than a basement as defined in the flood codes, there's a reason for that. Um and that's a basement in the flood chapter, which is different than a basement in the zoning chapter. Means uh it's subgrade on all sides, which we don't want in flood zones, we want, if you're building a new flood compliant building or raising your, you know, your home. You want it to be able to drain out on one side, and that's why that is written in such a way.
Yeah, I put that in layman's terms.
Sure.
So if, if I'm redoing my house, building a house, I take the base flood elevation. So let's just say in my neighborhood, it's six feet. I add two feet to that. And I can put parking underneath that, and that eight feet does not count to the overall height of my house. So let's just say in my zone, uh the house is allowed to be thirty-five feet, but I'm in this flood zone. So now, because of that eight feet, and I'm just using that as a, as, because of that eight feet, uh my, you know, my house is now allowed to be forty-three feet. To the, where we measured a roof line.
Yes, it would be, it would be height, it would be measured from base flood elevation, height for the floor area, so the, the square footage of that space would not count. Or yours totals, floor area, and it wouldn't count as a story.
Wouldn't count, so I just wanna point out that this is something that our, our friend, uh Mr. Tippett. Has been uh pushing for it, I think, you know, rightly so, uh he, he might have had the, the numbers wrong, but the idea was valid.
Yeah, and, you know. The planning department had studied this, sorry, let me pull a microphone closer, the planning department had studied this previously and um in. Our analysis back in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, I'm not sure the exact date, uh we did look at. Uh different residential neighborhoods in different districts within the flood plain to see what that meant measuring. Height from two feet above base flood elevation, and what we found is that in seventy-one. Percent of the sample, we didn't, you know, check every property with the sample properties. Uh seventy-one percent were a difference from the surface elevation to the height that you're measuring your new height from. Was five feet, so most cases, it would be, you would see in reality a five foot increase in height within the flood zone. To accommodate um this, this change, um but then there's the other, you know, twenty-nine percent. That, that may be higher, you know, there are certainly areas, you know, on the water where.
If you're. If you're on Plaza or, yeah. Gotcha. Alright.
So, and we basically just covered um floor area, uh stories and height in one. Elsewhere, those are all of the same standard where you can only have the lowest floor for parking. Uh the next section uh is just a, a few definitions that we've added, um the biophilic design elements I'll get to when I get to the next section, it's just the way the law is set up. Um I'll go to coverage, um we. Uh are adding a total lot coverage. Uh definition and also a change on the schedule of minimum requirements in residential and in non-residential districts. Um currently, there's some ambiguity in code that has led us to only be able to enforce. Building coverage on lots, so this would allow, um this would provide the village with a lot coverage requirement. Um I've set that at fifteen percent. Um up with the total lot area, you know, that's the policy discussion, you know, if you think that's. Too, you know. It's, it just seems like inappropriate number, um per driveway, patio, um. It's not like, if you, if you think about, I did some quick numbers, but I'll do it again, uh like a five thousand square foot lot, for instance. You're talking about seven hundred fifty square feet for patio and driveway, it, it's just seems like a reasonable. We added a definition for impervious surface uh to the zoning code, which was basically, we just took it from. The stormwater code and added it to the zoning code, so that was all in harmony. And then. In section four, we added another provision for uh ingress and egress to elevated buildings. Essentially, what we've seen in some of the applications that have come before the zoning board for variances is that they have, they need front yard uh setback variances. Because the stairs are much longer, uh because they have to reach the floor above the flood plain, and so. The stairs encroaching the front yard setback, so we provided a little bit of uh. Uh a way out of that uh variance request. And then the last section is related to infill housing, what we call infill housing in your code, it's the residential. Uses in commercial districts.
Thirty-four fifty?
At three forty-two fifty, there is part of P L C twenty nineteen, which you may remember. Law as a result of the moratorium, and there was green building element requirement added to the special permits. For any of these uh, you know, residential uses in commercial districts, that uh did not have any standards. And so this matrix tries to achieve standards for implementing. That requirement to give the planning board an idea of what, you know, they should expect.
Is this, is this in the flood zone or is it in all zones?
This is in all zone. Well, no, no, I should prestate that, this is not just affecting the flood zone, it's affecting any zones where residents' uses are allowed. In commercial districts, so C one.
Like the Marne Avenue, uh Post Road. Uh some parts of Halsted.
Halsted. Both to a lesser extent, because that was, uh you can only do one story of residential after P L C. Parts of North Berry, uh Marne Avenue.
Okay, so, so what you've done here is folks need to get to a score of a hundred. They get, so the easiest way, obviously, to a hundred is uh you do the five hundred year storm, that gets you to seventy-five.
Yep, yep.
And then uh you don't, of course, if you don't do that.
You have, you have to literally do all of them.
You have to do all of them, yes. And it brings you to a hundred and five.
Yeah, yes.
Uh there's one that I think we should include, uh that you don't have in there, and you could, you could put a uh, a value on it. Is that's blue roofs. Uh for those who don't know, a blue roof, uh i- i- is, is a, a roof that retains the stormwater. Uh up to a certain point on top of the roof and holds it there until such time. With it, where a valve opens up, when there, there's no longer water pressure on the other side, the valve opens up and slowly lets it out. Uh this, this is done a lot in the city, uh it's done a lot uh in communities like us. So I, I mean, I, I would think we would want that in there and to give it a value that would uh encourage people to use it.
Yeah, so, you know, I guess this is a question for the board in, in achieving that, so it's. The five hundred year storm, seventy-five points, that doesn't prescribe any way of, of getting to that five hundred year storm. And then the second bullet point is permeable pavers, poured concrete, rain gardens. Not included in the stormwater calculations and not um for the purposes of achieving five hundred year standard by the bottom. And and the reason I did that was because if you have to do all the other ones together. And you have to do a hundred year storm, top of that, because everyone has to do a hundred year storm design. And for these projects, we're getting a hundred year storm design plus permeable pavers, ports, concrete, rain garden, not included. Not counting towards that stormwater, not counting towards five hundred, so in any circumstance, someone's exceeding the hundred years. By either doing five hundred year, which gets them all the points really quickly, or by, you know, doing some other types of interventions that don't count. Towards their stormwater design.
Okay, so how do we, how do we get the blue roofs in there?
Um you could include it perhaps.
It's kind of a subset of a.
Maybe you can include it as an option under the five hundred year.
You wanna keep bicycle parking?
I, I do.
I know you do.
More detention.
Any combination of stormwater practices that attenuate peak flows.
Just why, if we do the, the stretch code.
If we do the, the stretch code. Without me, as far as the exceeding the state energy code requirement.
Yeah, that would make it default.
Couldn't, couldn't you consider a blue roof rainwater detention? I mean, it's not reused. That would be under that last.
Rainwater detention and reuse system.
Right, or, or would you say or reuse system? Because, you know, I mean, reuse things you want, want to keep it longer.
Well, why, why don't we just, so what do we, what are we valuing that at? So, what, what, let me just.
But I would suggest not having the, I would have it combined, be allowed to be combined with the five hundred year. Because.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, so. Rainwater detention reuse system. Uh, can we put especially using blue roofs?
For example, or.
Why, why do you want to single out one?
Cause he really likes.
I think they work. What do you think?
So, you know, I think it depends on the site, you know, uh, if, if you have a site and this Gino probably is better to answer this. But if you have a site that has groundwater. Right under very close high water table, then blue roof makes a lot more sense. Uh, but if you have a site at the top of the hill, you have to remember these, this, this permit affects, you know. Properties at the top of Kipco Hill, you know, right over here, um, all the way to in, in Washingtonville. And so you might have a different approach if you're the stormwater engineer, uh, depending on the property.
What are you gonna say?
The blue roof can be designed in, just like a, a normal dry well would be. Reten, you know, retention and a slow release, uh, you know, after the storm subsides or, you know, when a valve opens up, it's, it's very similar. It's just basically, once the storm passes, it's releasing it slowly into the, uh, either into combination, maybe into a rain garden ground or into the storm.
Right, but you, you, you're not gonna. If, if you're in an area where the ground is already saturated, doesn't it behoove you to use a blue?
Uh, like Greg mentioned, there are sites that are going to be difficult to, uh, 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 maybe get a dry well and. A three foot separation between the bottom of your infiltration system. Uh, uh, and groundwater and the bedrock. There are other sites there where it's, it's very difficult to do that. Uh, this blue roof system gives certainly better option.
Yeah, but if, if you look at properties in the C one and C two district. Right, and, and I have extensively, they're, they're usually odd shaped. Uh, they're, they're usually, uh, not large. And, uh, we're, we're putting, we're putting housing on them. And, uh, I, it, we, it's going to be hard for them, uh, to find enough room. Uh, on the property, the cold tech systems to, to operate.
Sure, because again, a lot of the commercial districts are practically on this building lot line to lot line. Really know, 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 you're not covering these up. And most of the commercial buildings, uh, are typically designed with. Most commercial buildings that you see are, you know, uh, are designed with a typical flat roof system.
Right.
Uh, which makes that a lot more, uh.
Alright, so I would, I, I, rainwater detention system, reuse systems.
Or, or reuse, it should be, or, right?
And read it, yeah, and, and how do we get blue roofs in?
We can put it in that, in that section. The rainwater detention and reuse, you do an or, but I think there should be a standard where we say it's a, you know, a certain percentage of the roof. And so it's not like you.
And given a value.
Yeah.
Um, since we're on a value system, um, where it says, uh. The electric vehicle and also bicycle parking, um. If people are able to maintain parking spaces on their property, could that be a point? Could that be added to points, point system?
A new development, they have to have spaces on the property.
Their parking, so it's not on those, it's not on the. Not street parking.
Yeah, this is for residential developments in non-residential districts. Um, I did have one other item, um, just, uh, we did also provide you an alternate version. Uh, right now in our village, in the stormwater law, there's a variance procedure if someone cannot meet the requirements. Uh, we wanted to, we talked about adding a requirement that if someone seeks for it as granted a variance. They got to pay into a flood mitigation fund.
Why, 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 why would I let somebody buy their way out of this?
No, they, they would have to be approved by, after, only after engineering analysis and we agreed with that, that.
Yeah, there's currently a waiver provision and we've seen it.
Yeah, it's not, it's very rare.
It's very hard. You, you have to basically prove there's no way to manage stormwater on your site.
Then maybe you should be built.
Is it easy to prove?
No.
No, it is not.
So, and this grants the waiver.
I think it's, it's the village manager, but, yeah.
Don't.
It's, it's already in there. Every, there's various procedures already in the law.
I think Bob, we have to have some sort of a variance. Did you ask your question, or? Yeah, I do. My question is, do we have to have a variance procedure? Well, you can decide, I mean, think about that.
Yeah.
Think about that as part of our, it's part of our evaluated process.
Uh.
Please.
Isn't that where you have zoning board for?
It doesn't go to them now, though.
Yeah, this is a variance from the stormwater law of a park. It's not a zoning.
Yeah, alright, uh, how about rainwater detention, blue roofs or reuse systems? Want to keep this open, we, we, we get later, but everybody, I, I think it's a favorite move of Ford, isn't it, right?
So what's, if, if we were to do it with whatever minor changes were done now, then what's, what's the working plan?
So, you know, if the board has consensus, you can choose a date, uh. You can, if the board has consensus, you can use, you can, you know, choose a date to schedule a public hearing and I can work on the environmental view.
I thought there were changes that the board wanted in the current draft.
I think the only change that we, we're talking about is the blue roofs. Okay, so why don't we put it on for a work session in two weeks?
Unless you want to adopt this and do another law that has the roof.
I want to chew my cabbage twice.
And the seeker process, can we, can we circulate it? Do we have to schedule? Zoning law has to go to.
Uh, it's, it's up to you if you, it, it would have to go to Harbor Coastal. Because it will be on this action, um, it's up to you, you want to circulate it to, uh, planning board zoning where that's, that's board decision.
I would think planning in Harbor Coastal.
Can we make the change and circulate it now? Just to speed it up a little?
Just to put, uh, blue roofs in there and send it up and then we get. We, we, we get their approval, uh, or whatever, their opinion, uh, we, we could then move forward.
So it would be an opinion, but not the advisory consistency, because for that you.
Now, what you're saying is even if we ask for their opinion, then we're going to have to ask for advisory consistency. So we should ask for advisory consistency now.
Okay.
Is that?
Is that Bob? Okay, alright, then we, we made a lot of progress here tonight.
Blessings.
I'm sorry, go ahead. We, we have a lot, we have a lot on the agenda, so let's just. Move forward.
Say that I'm really proud of us.
I am really proud of you, yeah.
I think, I think we should really, really proud of the staff.
The editorial loss.
Y'all did amazing.
Uh, we've followed law, don't be bogus. Are we ready to rock the roll with this? Yeah, you.
That's up to you.
I, I'm fine with it, period. Form, anybody else?
So you made the changes we discussed two weeks ago, so they're, they look fine. My only, my only comment, this is minor, is that it doesn't say what version it is. It's not like our tree law.
We're trying not to do that again.
Not twenty one.
We want to keep it to single digits.
Yeah, but two is okay, right?
Alright, so is everybody, do we have a consensus here to put this on to schedule a public hearing? At the next, uh, October tenth meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, streamline solar permit. Streamline, uh, any questions or concerns? Bob, do you have questions concerned about?
No.
No, it, it seems like, you know, smart, the, the quicker you get this.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty pounds is a lot of pounds, right?
There's two versions, right?
There's two versions.
I understand that, but twenty pounds is a lot of pounds for a house.
Yeah, but that.
That's good.
I talked to, I spoke with the B A R chair.
You're taking us down the wrong street.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that's, I don't, I don't want it to trigger B A O because that slows down the.
So they felt that anything over twenty is something they really want to.
Right.
And did we clear up if anything is a local landmark, that is that going to prevent us from doing the expedited permit?
I don't think we looked at that.
I don't know, there's like ten of them. I mean, I don't know that it matters, but it's, it, the fact is there are ten properties that are required to have a second step. And that step is B A R approval or search to get appropriateness, ten or eleven buildings.
Alright. So, so, can, can we move ahead with it? And, you know, if, if we need to amend it in the future? What do you think? True?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking out. Bob thinks that that's not a conflict. I'm, I think this is a really good idea.
I think the mayor suggests moving forward while, while I'm looking at it.
And, and if you.
Yeah, alright, let's do that. Okay.
Hey, what are you going with the twenty?
The twenty.
The twenty.
Uh, okay, so let's, let's put that on to schedule a public hearing at the next, uh, October tenth, meeting ten, ten. Great, uh, proposed amendments to village code, P L L, the police department. Uh, we talked about that. We're going to continue in October to talk about that. Uh, engineering assessment of Ameritic reservoir, we're going to be holding that. Uh, September twelfth proposal of laws to amend requirements to subdivision. Uh, P, is this a long discussion?
No, it's really simple. It's just matching the subdivision filing with the state subdivision filing. Our, our code doesn't update along with the law. So it's just making it standard.
Okay.
I just, I, I agree. I mean, I actually just, I looked at the state code. The state code is much more, um, complicated than our code, so. Right, right. Um, but our code also says, and this seems just so cute to me. Um, after written notification of approval of the subdivision plot, the applicant shall immediately file with the village engineer the following copies. The subdivision plot incorporating all the changes required by the planning board. One, one ink on tracing cloth, one lithoprint, one paper blueprint and two cloth blueprints. And while I love working with those documents, I kind of think maybe we don't need that requirement and if we're changing our code. Um, and then. Gino gets, the village engineer gets one copy of approved construction drawings in ink on tracing cloth and three paper blueprints. And I think maybe we should modify, we could modify that too. I, I mean, I just, I think while we're doing it, those things seem to be worth removing.
Alright. Uh. Quarterly resident benefit days?
That's me, so this is something I had a concept built. And I, I haven't fully flushed out, but it'd be something I would work with staff and essentially it would be something we would hold, hold quarterly. And where we would kind of, you know, have a day where residents can come and get information about one, any of those benefits, benefits that we offer. Or anything we offer in the county and this could be anything from, you know, housing assistance, how can they apply, who should we talk to? They feel like one thing that we did really well after a tragedy, after Hurricane Ida is. We had this room here and we had all the benefits here and residents got to come and get that information. So I wanted to find a way that we could do this quarterly where we can kind of, one, let them know the benefits that the county offers, but. Also let them know programs that we offer within our village to, you know, give them more assistance or so they have a better understanding or they can know. Things that they're not really aware of.
So it's like a informational debt fair.
So, yeah, essentially, yeah, so we can have nonprofits be a part of it and you can have the county come down and assist some people. We can have people. Within our community, our, the village going, you know, assisting lead, but there's a lot of benefits out there that feel there's such. There's one, there's not disinformation, but there's not enough information getting out to people about what they kind of qualify, what they would qualify for. If there is a benefit that can go out and, and, you know, achieve or get or how to sign up or, you know, getting over that hurdle of. Getting the assistance that they need, because many people are afraid to kind of go out and we should be the ones kind of advocating and pushing up this information to, you know, get the best assistance possible.
We'd be at a lot of emails too.
Do you want to make? Are you? Are you minimal to making it quarterly half days? So like we can do like maybe. Four P M to, to eight P M or something like that and.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be a full day. I agree. I think it, it could be a half day. I think afternoon time would work. Twelve before or.
Evening will work better for working parents.
School, working, all that kind of stuff.
Or maybe occasionally on a weekend.
So the board wants to set up those dates to be at the, at the rework meeting or something like that, that's fine.
I think we should. I think it's a really good thing. I'm happy to spearhead and kind of lead and contact people because I just think there's a lot of things that. A lot of benefits that are out there and people are either A afraid or B don't know what, what's out there. I think we should. Job as elected officials to be pushing that information out and getting residents kind of the assistance.
I sent you early, I sent everyone earlier a website called Seekers. I didn't know anything about it. I spoke to, uh, I spoke to a vendor and it lists all of the affordable units in county away. Right, I, I didn't know that was available. Apparently they were forced to do it in some lawsuit settlement or something like that, so. There's a lot of information out there that people don't know about, even people like.
The committee for the environment had a, the energy smart homes. In this room.
Yes.
Uh, last week, we had about, about thirty people, some, some came, some people came from, from, you know. The Bronx to come to it. It was, it was, uh, it was a pretty disgusting.
Yeah.
People want to know what's available. They do, and I think, I think our job is kind of let them know what's available. Help them out to either, you know, learn and.
The whole slide, the whole presentation is, is available. Send that to you to get it.
It, I, I think it's sent, was sent to everybody who signed, who signed up, which is really nice. Yeah.
Maybe one person, one person from the village, obviously, one person from the town, one person from the towns, one person from the county. At a table.
Could it be like depart, some, like some department heads, like if they had questions about.
Yeah.
It might rotate with different people who had different.
Yeah, we can, we can run it to department heads, he and I.
Thanks, Greg.
We can alternate that and, and run through.
Love the idea.
Call the directive.
This is a great solution to transparency. Solution based.
Okay, thank you. Uh, proposed local law to amend for subdivision plot filings?
No.
We did that, I'm sorry. Uh, diversity, equity, inclusion training for volunteer boards and committees. Uh, this was Leilani proposed this.
Oh, oh, yeah, I, yeah, I know, I'm gonna take the credit. Well, let's not even, let's make sure that the, um, that's noted again, that was Leilani's idea, not the board of trustees as a whole. But to bring diversity, equity and, um, inclusion training to initially, yes, I did state that. Um, I would like the village staff to be. I would like the village staff to be trained in it, but I also in hindsight and bigger, the bigger picture was for the board to be trained. As well as individuals who are on the committees and boards, because they are making decisions just as much as us. For the community and most people don't even understand the dynamics or the the cultural backgrounds and the ethnicities and just. The livelihoods uh in the historical context of of these various different communities. They don't understand, so and I think it is our job to be edu, to educate folks. And to shine a light and just say, you're not the only one here. So I know we approve for the staff to do it, do we have a date for that, is that?
We don't have a date yet, we do have a preliminary meeting set up in a couple of weeks, uh kind of like a um. An assessment meeting.
Got it.
So we currently have um. Professional service agreement with the company to do uh village staff and board of trustee members.
And that.
Yeah, we don't have any, we don't have any provisions for committees, boards. Those, the other. How many, Sally, how many do you think we have?
Committee members?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have provisions for that, so that's what this item is, I think.
And the agreement we have is like twelve sessions, right?
Yep.
So. Um, I would think that anything aft, when when do we, uh, when are people up, when does it, it's like November, December, December. So if we do um agree upon that boards and committees should be trained. It should be after December.
Forget, like January.
Um, yeah.
So a new list will be generated, Sally has the list, she maintains the list, the new list will be generated in December at the rework and then we can have an actual count. And go from there, we can bring that to the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Alright.
Thank you.
Just let's. We we did the library. Thank God. Let's just go to items, because I, let's break at seven thirty, let's just get the items on for tonight, make sure, because one of them is is not gonna be that easy. Paving Oriente in the Parkway. Village engineer. Oriente Avenue, brother.
So uh, we have approximately two hundred and seventeen thousand left in our paving budget. She didn't actually want the paving by at Avenue, so that permitted us. The possibility to pave other streets. Uh Oriente Avenue from Boston Post Road off to Sullivan, I believe is uh, was in pretty, pretty poor condition. I held off on paving that because I thought we were gonna be doing another project and see the future, so we can actually pave that road now. And then we're gonna be paving Parkway from Creek to South Derry Avenue, which was in very poor condition. We solicited a bid from. Lorley, uh, they had a piggyback contract with Ry Brook. Marana did did a fine job, but there was some logistical issues. That kind of made me point to another, uh, to get another bid from another company, see how they perform. And go forward like the next year.
Yeah. I mean, she is, I don't know if they've gone to the paperwork to be in.
Okay. Everybody fine with a little more paving?
And I will say that I thought on my street, the milling was really good, like they really got it down.
They can do great work, but setting up that work is.
Oh, yes, I was, it was four different or five different delays, yes.
Exactly right.
Other contractor forms and the prices is very, very similar. So the 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 one advantage I'd like to say is that uh, one, Lorley does have uh their own milling equipment, so we're not reliant upon another. So the scheduling will be will be easier and two, in this contract, uh, there is inclusive of uh, uh striping. So we don't have to go again to another. Like another contractor or D P W to strike.
Well, it was just nice because we still have curbs, I think that's great.
So this is Hillside Avenue in Narnic.
Well, that's, no, that that was the, that's the first time with a new business, which we haven't gotten to yet.
A little paving project.
Okay.
Okay, everybody fine, this is gonna be on the agenda for tonight?
Yep.
A proposal for architectural design, we had our our friend Jeff on here. Let's just get this one out of the way, we travel authorization for Chief Zarusa, we had that before, everybody's fine with that.
Yep.
Okay, use of peg money. Grant funds for L M C T V office space, and it's not just office space, it's studio space. At American cinemas. So. This money has always been allocated. Via the Board of Control. Board of Control uh used to comprise us, the village of Larchmont and the town of Amerenick. Village of Larchmont uh officially uh withdrew from the Board of Control. And they did it according to the contract that they had signed, they gave us a year's notice and they withdrew. The town of Amerenick in a, in a leap of lead legal logic. Decided that uh since the contract with the. Horizon and the cable providers had expired, the border control contract was then null and void. Uh, which our attorney did not agree with. Uh, so they unilaterally, as far as I'm concerned, dissolved the board of control. Now. We could. Say, hey, that that's a breach of contract. And initiate uh. Legal action based upon that. But, you know, uh, I I I think in in life, uh, when when the marriage is over, the marriage is over. And it it would just be wasting their money, wasting our money, and even if we won, they could, they could still withdraw within a year. So I don't think it's a great use of uh. Money of the two communities, uh, which most of us belong to both communities. So. They unilaterally uh sent all this money, uh, that was being held by the town comptroller. Uh, who was the treasurer of the board of control. For forty some odd years. And they said, hey, here's your share. And that share is based upon the nineteen eighty census of the three communities. So that leaves us in a rough position, because normally what would happen is the members of the board of control would vote on allocating that money. To L M C T V, the money would be allocated and that was the way it worked for forty odd years. Uh, I could speculate onto the reasons that the town is doing this, but uh, you know. It's, it's, you know. It's. Not a good exercise, really. So we now earn a position. I had originally said at the board of control that I support uh giving the money to L M C T V. For purposes of building a new studio at the Amerenick uh cinemas. On the Mariner Avenue. It's a perfect location for them, uh, it, they they have street visibility, it uh. Will will allow them to uh expand into other areas that they're not in. And make people more aware of them, which I think they really need to do. Uh, so. Since the board of control is defunct and the money's now come back to the village of Amerenick. I don't feel that me just saying months ago at the board of control, I think we're we're gonna support this. Uh, is a legal way of allocating that money, I think it has to come back to the five of us, because it's now, money's being held. Uh, by the clerk treasurer of the village of Amerenick. So that money now has to be allocated by the five of us. Uh, I I, it saddens me greatly uh to see the board of control uh go out of business. Uh, I've been a member of the board of control uh since two thousand and four, when I won an election, I was on the board of control. As the town of Amerenick councilperson and I was on the board of control as the mayor of the village of Amerenick. And it it always worked great and it 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 was partner with L M C T V and we shared a vision. Local access to the whole community. But it is what it is, so I'm I'm asking uh that all of us. Uh, consider allocating the money that would have been our share, so L M C T V can begin the work that they have to do. Uh, at the uh, at the movie theater, they have uh. They have already contracted with contractors. And they have made commitments. And they made those commitments based upon guarantees that the board of control had given them. So this is all uh. Quite uh concerning. Jerry, did I, did I leave anything out?
Uh, no, Mayor, I think you covered everything, one big change I think that is coming down the road for the town residents that they don't realize is or. Uh, village residents that they don't realize is that they're not gonna, probably not gonna be able to see or view town board meetings anymore. I think you had brought it up at the last board of control meeting.
Yeah.
And so village meetings will still be managed through for village residents, but I think the. The overlap where people would get to see the town, I'm not sure if that's gonna be available for them anymore.
Yeah.
So I think village residents may have lost the ability to see town events and town board meetings on their, on whatever. Yeah, we won't see Larchmont either, right?
Uh, you know, it it's sad, because the whole idea of L M C T V and its genesis and genesis of board of control. Was to knit the three communities together. So to, you know, to uh say, hey, you know, we were really one committee, uh, community and. You're problems are our problems and we wanna see what's going on with you and we share events together and we share a little league together. And uh, you know, it's it's sad to me that, you know, uh, it's a shared service that's now no longer shared.
I would, I would say this also, that um. We're divvying this money up based on a forty three year old census information. We've grown a lot more than those, uh, than than the town or the village. I think they're getting, I mean, I think. We probably need to revisit this and I think we probably deserve a larger uh share of what is admittedly a shrinking pie.
Well, what's gonna, what's gonna happen in new contracts with the uh cable companies is they're gonna do, they they're gonna. They they didn't have to do that before, they just took the the amalgam of the three communities, right? Uh, now they're gonna have to uh find out how many people in the village of Amerenick are getting cable TV. How many people in the town of Amerenick are getting cable TV and what you get is the, and it, this isn't actually a negotiated item. Uh, according to federal law, uh, the municipality gets five percent. Of the gross of just cable. Not internet. Not, you know.
So, so we have. Twenty thousand residents, ten thousand. Get cable, right, so that's fifty percent. And they have, I don't know how many they have, five, six thousand residents, any unincorporated?
Not, not incorporated is thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand, so they'll get.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half, they'll get.
Six and a half, brother.
Six and a half, they'll get sixty five hundred, whatever it costs out, now we were, we were kind of like a big group where we were kind of sharing those. Funds, it's it's gonna be their revenue, their. It's gonna go way down.
But I I think we need to make, make sure that we we capture as much of our revenue as possible and not let it slide away.
No, 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 it's gonna be based upon users in that community. Uh, but the 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 really sad thing is too, and I don't know how to stop this, this is just the march of time, is that. A lot of, you know, uh, my kids uh don't get cable TV.
No.
You know, they they stream everything and, you know, I think a lot of people are streaming everything and. I I I can't make a good argument to people uh that to not stream because it's cheap.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to come up with a, with a different um.
Yeah.
A different model for this L M C thing at some point anyway, but at least. That day is not today.
So so maybe, so so that's probably right, but they're in our front, they're in our front yard now. They're at the town center, they're just gonna be right above. They're next door to us now.
So they used to be right there.
Yeah, they used to be right.
And I would like to pursue the the idea of renaming it.
Amerenick TV?
Amerenick TV.
Village of Amerenick. Actually, actually, it's it's media, that that because they're.
Yeah, yeah.
They're into podcasts.
No, no need to leave you the shit.
Yeah, yeah, and and there are, there are hundreds of young men and women uh who have uh. Taken classes at L M C T V. Uh, and and some of them have gone on to careers uh in the field of television or theater. And it's, yeah.
My my son interned there.
Your son, okay, there you go. There you go. Alright. You guys wanna break for dinner?
Yeah.
I hope so.
Um, we're not, can we at least get to the um. The uh, yes, thank you, for traffic safely.
Alright. Fifteen eleven Amerenick Avenue, adding a five foot buffer before the driveway. Uh, I I think that there was some question about whether we could legally do this.
Yeah, I I spoke with uh Matt Carmody, our traffic engineer and, you know, that's a county road, so we need the county's permission and. Uh, based on his experience and my experience, we think the county wouldn't give permission. But I I do have some suggestions I would like to discuss with the homeowner. As to how we can possibly achieve the desired result.
Okay, so when do you expect to uh speak with the homeowner?
Uh, I can reach out to the homeowner tomorrow.
Thank you.
The homeowner is a village employee, correct?
Indeed.
Yep.
Yep.
Traffic save the item two, adding crosswalks at Mount Pleasant. And Prospect Avenue intersection.
We can certainly do it and we just redid the sidewalks and uh curb ramps, so seems like the perfect opportunity.
Yep.
So we can put a work order in for uh.
They needed some of these.
It's it's an always stop.
Always stop, yeah.
Yeah, but you didn't, you don't need an always stop to have crosswalks, but it helps.
You know, they're concrete work, so.
Come in yourself.
We can delete that, just administrative?
That's administrative.
So these, these will be on in two weeks.
Well, the the uh, the first two, there's no, there's no board action required, I mean, unless you wanna adopt a resolution supporting.
And then number three.
Number three will require board action.
Yes.
Englishham Park entrance to Florence Park, adding handicap and ADA, ADA parking ramp?
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna put in a handicap parking space, you have to have the appropriate ramp. So it it it's definitely uh doable, uh, it's 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 a little bit more than just. Uh, paint and a sign, so.
Right at the dead end.
Yes, at the dead end near the entrance to the park and um Jeff thinks it's also a good idea and also a good idea to put um. Uh, uh, a handicap, um, assess, have handicap accessibility at all the parks. So this will be the first one.
Okay.
Um, if not at other parks, but I did speak with him, he thinks that it's a great idea and this was quite, what for through the um, the traffic committee.
Okay.
And considering that, I, as I, what I think is the idea is to have somebody. Be able to access the park, not a residence nearby, is there a way of limiting it to like, you know, three hours or something so that. People who use, so that it's meant to be for park users, not.
We establish a time limit.
Yeah, you can establish a time limit.
So that, so that it's used for the.
It will be part of the law.
At least, at least during park hours.
Next to the, the, right, there's an existing walkway in the park as well, it's right next to that, so.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, so let's put that on for two weeks.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, and we we don't have an executive session, right?
Blessings.
Thank God, uh, I need a motion to end the work session.
I I just wanted to know if the Hillside Avenue from Amerenick Avenue to the bridge is is being done?
Yes.
It's about.
It's the sidewalk, it's not the road, but the sidewalk. It's gonna happen next year.
That's fine, it's something.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, put the backup to the ten. Put the backup to the ten. On regular.
I'm upping the resolution we adopted back then, I I think the second distribution was speed of eight fifty. How much was the second distribution request?
Sixty one, right?
Eight sixty one? Okay. Um, Augie, you recall with the second.
Looking it up right now.
Okay.
Are you gonna change the resolution?
Yeah, I was, anything involved, yeah.
It's all attached to the regular meeting, but you're gonna have to add that item.
I understand, I've already been instructed as such.
I'll just, you just text me your number, I'm gonna eat some dinner, okay?
All right, Dan, I'll text you the number.
Okay, thank you.
In the fight of allegiance.
Hi.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, before I start the meeting, I just want to notice that there's a emergency exits on my right and brand new emergency exits on my left. Uh, nobody's gonna miss those old wooden doors. Uh, please, if you have your cellphone, please put it on mute. Thank you very much. I need a motion to open the meeting.
Some second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, presentations, we have no presentations. No, what we're gonna do, we're gonna move to the front, which is what we're actually gonna rearrange this, but we're gonna move the village managers' report to the front because this way folks can actually see what's going on because he usually comes at the end and he has some exciting information for us tonight. Village manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this past weekend, the village received approximately an inch and a half of rain for a very long period of time. The track of Ophelia State South of our area. But um, in South Jersey and Ed Harbor City, they dumped about five inches of rain. It doesn't take much for storms to shift and produce a significant amount of rainfall. Once again, we were prepared, but we were very lucky. About fourteen days ago, we were able to mobilize and program six cameras at various locations to use for emergency management viewing of our rivers. Our IT department has been trying to work on a solution to stream the cameras during major rain events. When cameras are streamed via the Village YouTube channel, the public will be asked, if interested, to click on a link uh, that they can get from the Village website homepage. Only a few emergency management staff and board of trustee members will have separate login accounts. The board of trustees have been provided their login account. The public will be able to view the cameras on YouTube. Dan, do you have them up?
Yep.
So the screen will be, so we have six cameras. One camera um, at Warren Avenue is down. Uh, but the other six cameras are up and they're continuous. They uh, are always recording, but they are not always broadcasting. So it's only when we decide that they need to broadcast is when the cell service on each unit start to broadcast and start to send us um, the uh, the imaging.
So if, if, if they're broadcasting constantly, we'd be playing it for cellular service for each of them.
Oh yeah, the, the broadcast, the cellular service bill would be astronomical. So what they're doing is they're recording because they have units and we can go back in the event that there's um, some reason to go back and take a look, but when it comes to broadcasting, it'll be during major rain events and what'll trigger that is probably a robocall from Dan or from Robert, and then the robocall will instruct the people who are um, who, who are on the list to receive that call, to be able to um, go to the Village website and they'll see these cameras up and they'll see the areas that are uh, uh, being, being monitored. Uh, in the near future, in the next few weeks or so, uh, we will be adding um, measure sticks and other items there. Uh, there'll be poles painted um, so you can get to see what the uh, normal river level is compared to what it's um, you know, shown among the cameras. So it's just a work in progress, but they are working except one, which will have to be repositioned um, in uh, probably this week when uh, we get, we're able to get out there.
Now, each of these cameras, they have other views as well, right? Correct?
So this is the home view, look, and you can manipulate the cameras to be able to look around the cameras. But they're always facing down. They don't have, they're not facing out, they're not facing into people's houses or anything like that. They're just facing down. So you can kind of see down around the ground. But there's six cameras, these are the views, and you can move the camera around, but understand that it's a pedestal type of mount and it's always facing down.
And I, uh, from what I understand, the, the, if, if the police need to, they can, they can access these.
They can, but that's where with the playback stuff comes in because it would be normally, let's say, God forbid, there's an accident or a car accident or something like that. They'll be able to see that situation. But as far as Cliff and I and his staff, we want the home view, which is the base, I guess, uh, location to be monitored, monitored all the time.
So we're, we're monitoring the dam twenty, you know?
The dam, we're monitoring Plaza Avenue. Plaza, we're monitoring um, North Barry, near, near MEMS, we're monitoring Grove Street, we're monitoring Warren Avenue Park, we're monitoring a lot of locations.
These are, these are locations that we had to send people out to look at.
Yeah, so right. Typically, we would run around and you've had pictures from me, right? Every fifteen minutes or less of different pictures. We don't have to do that anymore, so we can see them live.
Or the fire department used to station a man up by the dam.
Right.
Just to report on it when a dam topped.
Uh, I don't know if this may be the appropriate time. I have two communications here that we received. Uh, um, one was from the uh, police chief and um, Chief DeRosa uh, communicated with us, actually before we even approved these uh, uh, because I asked her about it. And she said, I believe that the river monitoring system would be beneficial. The police department officers assigned to the police desk can remotely monitor those locations. In addition to patrol, officers checking locations in person, this is a special In addition to patrol, officers checking locations in person, this is especially useful. If an officer cannot get close enough to an area due to flooded roadways, uh, the current village cameras have aided the PD in numerous ways and and she thinks this is a good uh, addition. Uh, after we approved them, um, Chief, uh, James Barney, uh, DPW, a foreman or general foreman of Public Works, rather. Uh, said, uh, Robbie will let us know that the new monitoring devices could potentially, our department as well. Our command vehicles will soon be equipped with iPads to aid our chiefs en route and during emergencies. So the the uh, both uh, of our first responder. Major first responders have uh, reacted very positively to this, uh, the placement of these cameras and the acquisition of them.
Chief Bonilla Lou has been very instrumental in locating these and when uh, we have access if we need to move them around, um. We've been able to work with the, with LDT, the company to really, really focus on um, emergency management. Mayor, part of the um, part of the other parts of my report include one item from the village preliminary audit and another item of LMC media. So um. As some of you know, the local press ran a press release um, that we sent out this past weekend about our excellent financial condition. And some of the uh, some of the things that came out during the phone call that we had with um, with our auditor. Is that we came in uh, three point seven million dollars under expenditures and exceeded revenue projections by two point eight million. Sales tax exceeded estimate, s- estimates by eight hundred thousand, permit fees by four hundred thousand, which is building department, et cetera. And we liquidated a lot of purchase orders that we just didn't need to 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 purchase those items towards the end of the year. Um, a lot of, a lot of it was the, the work of the departments uh, who came in collectively at one point two five million under budget. Um, legal expenses, sorry Bob, came down about a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Engineering costs, Gino, I don't know how you did it, but that came down to a hundred and six thousand. And public safety costs were um, much, much lower. We had um, we had issued a couple of transfers, we had approved a couple of transfers that we didn't need, so. That worked out really well. The surprising.
Transfers to the budget.
Yeah, transfers to the budget, yeah. Um, so it's eight hundred and sixty thousand, Mayor, less than planned. But the one big surprise was insurance premiums were reduced by a hundred and seventy thousand and um. It's uh, amazing, uh, I think Dan knows the reason why, I forget the reason why, but um, flood insurance has gone down significantly. Uh, especially in a lot of our properties, and when I speak to business owners, their flood insurance has gone down as well. A couple of businesses on Maranic Avenue used to pay, one business I spoke to two weeks ago, used to pay sixty-six hundred a year in flood insurance, he paid twenty-two hundred a year now.
It was about time.
Equalization uh, of flood insurance throughout the state, I'm not sure, but our rates have gone down significantly.
Possibly, since they don't.
Is there anything, I mean.
I don't know, I I just haven't, I just haven't, I didn't big beef enough to to find out, but um, I just haven't had the time. But there isn't, there isn't any.
Did it change?
Sorry, I, we had this.
I'm sorry, but does it change, like, in terms of your insurance, does it change the output, like, when you, when there, a flood does come? The amount of money that they give back?
No, we didn't lower our, our, we didn't lower the deductibles or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean.
And we did really, I mean, we we collected during Ida, we collected nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars on flood insurance. All the cars that we lost, the trucks, the buildings.
The big factors that, so we we have the CRS reading, which gives a ten percent reduction, but that's been in effect for a number of years, I mean. You know, the other factors I could think of would be, you know, uh, the flood insurance is subsidized by the federal government. Unless they put more money into the subsidy, but that would have been a nationwide impact.
Um, we would have known about that.
Homeowners certainly has.
Yeah, but it's based on your experience or having, it could be if they, if if after a storm like Ida, they didn't suffer damage, maybe. Their experience rating went down, but I.
Let's move on, yes.
So finally, Mayor, as the um, former administrator of the municipal uh, Board of Control. I want to congratulate LMC Media. Um, this past November twenty twenty-two, they presented plans to us, the Board of Control. Uh, for a new studio on Maranic Avenue and were given the okay receipt. LMC Media commenced on the project and obtained. Or or were able to obtain a new studio space, so they relinquished two, I think, of three spaces at town centers, so they no longer occupy the space of the town. Uh, giving their town space, I guess, for expansion, um, but they executed a lease with the Maranic Cinemas to um. To create a new, matter, we still call it Studios on the Avenue, Studio on the Avenue, so. Congratulations to LMC Media Board and their staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, we're reported and, you know, the the savings and the uh. Health, the fiscal health uh, is uh. Attributed to your leadership that you gave to staff and the amazing team that you put together to lead the village. Uh, okay, um, we're gonna do public hearing and then we'll go to uh, order bills that we'll take out of order. We're gonna take uh, LMC first on a, on the new business. First up, invitation to address the board, uh, there's a, there's a three minute limit, uh, but please, the mic is open to the public. Sally, can Orgy do the time?
Good evening. Uh, Don Caster, I live on Carol Avenue, may I have a moment? May I walk up to you for a second?
Yes, sir, but when you speak, please speak into the mic. No, come, you can come, come, I I, give us what you need to give us.
Thanks. Just wanted to draw your attention to this first.
Right, right.
And Carol Avenue. Carol Avenue, um, stop shot being, right now, there's no parking on this side.
Okay.
There's no parking on the other side, the whole way down. This has been a longstanding issue. Right now, there's a hundred feet from that sign and the stop sign, you can get thirty feet from a stop sign, so we should be able to get it back.
Mr. Cantor has uh, given me a picture of Carol Avenue where spots were removed and now he's gonna speak upon that.
Good evening, um.
Mr. Caster, I'm sorry.
On the, we were all surprised to suddenly discover that parking was removed from one side of our block. None of us were aware of that. So the odd numbered side was removed the whole way down. At the end of the block on the even numbered side, years ago, they had put up a no parking sign. From the end to the stop sign, which we didn't have a problem with because it made for a clear lane to the end. Right now, because we've lost a side on the other side, parking on the other side, we lost three spaces over there. We could regain those on the even numbered side. Given the following, we have sufficient space from the last driveway to the end for at least two. And I discussed this with the Board of Traffic the other night. If you look at the end of the block here, prospecting the small bump out across the street there. If you do a small bump out on the end of this and move the stop sign out, you could actually get three spaces back, so we would regain the three that we lost on that side. Which would be vital for the residents on the block right now because this has eliminated something on the order of ten or twelve parking spaces that we had. And this would at least give us three back. Right now, it's pushing a lot of our cars and people who used to park on Halsted are now parking. Over on the four hundred block of Carol, they used to come over to our side, now they're over there, and especially when it comes to alternate side with street cleaning.
Right.
That's gonna move ten cars off of our side down to four hundred plus everything else they had to do to shift over, so it's gonna make a real problem on the other side of Carol. Ultimately, at least once, if not during snow and the all, in the long run. So it's just, I'm trying to, on behalf of my neighbors, I've talked to a number of about that, they all agree with me, this would be a good thing, and the traffic commission asked me to, to address that with them, I have. And I'm bringing it to you to find the fastest route to get this done.
Uh, the traffic, how it usually works, sir, is the traffic commission makes a recommendation to us. I I will get in touch with the Chair of the Traffic Commission tomorrow and see where they are on it. And hopefully, we could find some uh, accommodation.
Thank you, thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Mayor, you'll have to speak to Chief Barney as well. This came from.
It came from the Fire Department.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura Body.
Hi, Laura.
Hello.
I am part of the Traffic Commission, speaking as resident in response to the, and I have the answer in regard through the flooding insurance reduction. Only because I've gone, I just went through this and just most recently paid. My FEMA forced flood insurance, which is completely separate than your homeowner's liability, separate insurance, completely. The bill would substantially be anywhere between five thousand and six thousand dollars out of pocket every year for forced flood insurance. It has now gone down substantially to fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars per family. I could not believe it myself.
Yeah.
No, nor did I think the federal government would give us a give back into that, it's that large. So after having a large conversation, what they found that they needed to do was even the playing field. So anybody requesting flood insurance, I'm gonna give uh, an example. If somebody in Shore Acres wanted to add flood insurance to their home, they would have it at a cost of two hundred and fifty dollars per household. Where the flood victims or the flood residents would have to pay six or eight thousand dollars to cover their homes for its flood insurance. They have cleared that deck and put the cost equally amongst everybody who is required flood insurance. And everybody has to pay an even piece of the pile.
Gotcha.
The output is the same, you're paid based on your percentage of loss. If you've lost once or twice, you're pushing, you're going to go down to that percent, but as far as the payments, they have gone down more than this.
That's great.
Wonderful day.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. And thank you for explaining.
You're welcome.
News night.
Lou, wishing you news is good news.
I'm starting seven oh four on the floor, I'm on the Traffic Commissioner, I'd like to talk about two issues. There was an interesting article in the Maranic Review of September, of September twenty-second, that I'd like to read for the benefit of perhaps people. And it had a local summit panel addresses homeowners' risk of flooding. Mr. Sarnoff, Daniel Sarnoff, the village of Maranic Deputy Village Mayor, whose responsibilities include flood mitigation. Stressed the need for advanced preparation for potential evacuation. He recommended. A ready-to-go bag of necessities, some kind of water, radio, cellphone, uh, first aid kit, and other things. Um, I'm just reading pertinent parts of this. New construction in a flood zone must be built above the established base flood level. Elevating older premises in that area can result in substantial flood insurance premium savings. Federal government will pay up to seventy-five percent of the cost of elevating home based upon its damage history. Um, and a suggestion preparing advance a list of cleanup and restoration specialists, plumbers, and electricians. Uh, homeowners should document contents via photos before a flood. And continue through various stages of loss until the work is completed. Uh, Con Ed will only turn service back on once a licensed electrician certifier's.
The mayor.
Have been satisfactorily completed. This is what was paraged, Mr. Sarnoff, Mr. Sarnoff pointed out that when sunny days return, engineers and architects. Can help design solutions to prevent future flooding. They can map a plan around the movement of water on your property. Waterproof walls can help in the search for water entry points, since they return color upon contact with water. As waters rise, there are clearly measures we can take as we face, face the risk of flooding. There's a webinar, you can look probably on LMC Media, or you can get this newspaper. The other thing I want to talk about is the, the work session. I was happy to see that there were three issues from the Traffic Safety, Traffic Commission. And I want to thank Ray Lonnie, they, I know that they would not be on here had it not been for you advocating for our traffic mission, I want to thank you. Unfortunately, uh, I don't know who's responsible or what the powers, but it never got addressed. I'm disappointed that it didn't get addressed. Thank you.
We got it addressed after you left.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. I left too early. Thank you. If if I said that, I apologize.
No worries, we did, we did address it. It was the very last thing.
That'll be due to you putting it, I'm gonna give you all the credit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another group I used to be in, they said, don't quit before the miracle. Anybody else?
Great.
Uh. We're gonna open up a public hearing on PLLD twenty twenty-three. Propose local law to amend the code of the village of Maranic regarding fees for certain building, uh, planning and zoning applications. Uh, I need a motion to open a public hearing.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Uh, Bob, you want to give a little brief synopsis? I I noticed it's not a major change.
Right, so the law itself, basically, views, rough fees are charged by building and planning markets. And captures. Each of those in the code.
That's basically.
Nice. Sorry, so what the law does is provide that for each of the fees that we charge for building and planning. Uh, rules or reviews, that they're captured in the code.
That's.
Okay, the, the change, you said there's, this change comes later in your agenda, when you, you know, the revolution.
We actually set the.
Setting the fees.
Right.
And what the resolution does is it changes a couple of things as a practical matter. There's actually some confusion in the code about this, but right now, what should happen is that. Fees for building permits get captured upon the initial application, and the fee for building permit can be substantial. Because it's based on the, you know, value of the construction. But there are applications that never get to a building permit. Because they need a, need approval from the planning board or the zoning board, you don't get it. So what, and that did not, did not appear to be fair. So the new structure is you don't pay that building permit fee until you actually get to building permit review after you've been through the boards. But now you pay a small fee, several hundred dollars if you remember it is. For an initial review by the building department, the planning department, which basically decides what your track is, do you go right to a building permit application? So you don't need any impressionary approvals, whether you go through the planning and the zoning board or whatever, HZMC, whatever process you need to go. That's in sum and substance, that's the change that's made.
Cause, cause there wasn't a mechanism before to give people refunds.
That's right.
And uh, okay, which obvi- obviously seems inherently unfair. So this is to protect our residents and to just make, make the law more equitable.
And what this, this law does, if you adopt it, is that it gives the village manager authority to refund those fees. If they've been paid in the last six months.
Gotcha.
Someone paid for a building, but never even got a building permit review.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions from the board?
And that captures anybody who might have been caught in this previously.
In the last six months.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, I need a motion to adopt the law, if that's your want.
Move to adopt the law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Uh, next item we're gonna bring up on the agenda, uh, we're gonna do it before the order to bills, because I see them waiting patiently. Uh, LMC TV, our friends at LMC TV. As Jerry pointed out, uh, they are, they are doing a great project at the library, not the library, jeez, I'm sorry. Uh, they're doing a great project at the new movie theater, which actually is a great addition to the village. Uh, and it goes hand in hand with their mission and they will have high visibility on the avenue. Uh, normally, how this would have been handled is the Board of Control used to allocate the money. So the Board of Control, of which I was a member, uh, and it was a member from the Town of Maric and a member from the Village of Larchmont. The Village of Larchmont um, removed itself over a year ago. And they did it through the process that we, they were contractually obligated to do it by.
Explain what they're, what they control.
Yeah, I'm. Uh. The Board of Control controlled all the money uh, from the franchise fees that were paid by the uh. By the cable operators and also something called the peg money, which is uh, really capital money, which is what we're gonna be talking about tonight. Uh, so that left the Town of Maric and the Village of Maric on the Board of Control. The Town of Maric, through what I believe is a leap of legal logic, uh, decided that the contract was null and void between us and them. Because uh, the contract had expired with uh, the cable operators and we're in the middle of renegotiating it, even though the cable operator. even though the cable operators are still honoring the contract and paying, uh, their their shares. Uh, I I I think that they're wrong about that, uh, but the only way to redress that uh, would be to initiate a lawsuit. And it 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 really it would not, uh, be in a taxpayer's interest to do that. Uh, I feel very, very sad that the Board of Control, uh, is no longer going to be around. It was around for over 40 years and served this community very, very well. Uh, the three communities at one time shared a vision. And the vision was to to have a a media company, a a television operation that knit us all together that, uh, allowed us all to have shared experiences to be able to view, uh, board municipal meetings of other municipalities. And, uh, th- that is something that's going to be, uh, a thing of the past and it's a shared service, unfortunately, that, uh, I feel very sad, uh, is going away. I I've been on the Board of Control both as a trustee and as a Town of Mamaroneck council person and now as mayor. And, uh, to me, it was a classic, uh, something that wasn't broke. Uh, so why, what, why not? Why are you trying to fix something that wasn't broken? It worked perfectly for 40 years. So with that long preamble, uh, because I I I do want to explain why this is happening before. I had, as a Board of Control member, had approved the disbursement of this money to L M C TV, L M C Media, I'm sorry. Uh, but when the town unilaterally decided, uh, that they were no longer going to participate in the Board of Control, their comptroller, who was the treasurer for the Board of Control, uh, forwarded our share of the franchise fees and the peg money to our clerk treasurer. And just said, here's your money, you know, do what you want to do with it. Uh, so we're we're in a situation where my prior vote, uh, to approve this money going to L M C is null and void because it's that that money is now with the Village of America. It isn't with the Board of Control. So we're in a situation tonight where the Board of Trustees, uh, I hope, uh, and I'm pretty sure is going to vote, uh, to disperse the money that L M C TV needs to do the project that, uh, they really deserve to have. So I just, I had to explain that all because it's a real change in, uh, you know, 40 some odd years. It was 1980, so it's had 43 years of village history. All right. Uh, anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay, I I would gladly make the motion, uh, that we, uh, disperse the money to L M C TV. This is item, if you're playing along on the home version. Uh, this is item four E. Uh, resolution use of peg, uh, public educational government grant funds for L M C TV office space and studio space at Mamaroneck Cinemas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Passes unanimously.
News in good health. And consider calling yourself Mamaroneck meeting.
Village.
Village of Mamaroneck. All right. Thank you. Uh, all right. Next item on the agenda is the abstract. Uh, item two A, you're right.
Yeah.
Abstract of ordered vouchers. And tonight's tonight's grand total.
I'm going.
Sally, remember you told me you were going to give me that and I told you I didn't need it? Did I speak too soon?
I think that was me. I wasn't around that day.
Hold on one second. Give me one second. I I think I saw it in here the other day when I was going through.
It's nine nine one one three seven.
I gotta sign it.
Zero zero.
That should all. Can I have a can I have a copy of the please? All right. Uh, tonight's, uh, I probably left it worth. Uh, tonight's grand total is 991,137 dollars. Any questions or concerns?
I have one and it's not, I just, it's, I I and it's just, it's a process question and is that um, this week I went, this last week, Lonnie and Sally and Carolina and I all went to Nikon, which is New York Conference of Mayors for pretty intensive week of learning. And, um, some of the tracks I did were controllers tracks and I think that we that I'm concerned that we are supposed to be either more intensively auditing the bills, which I think is a complicated process. Um, and it not to say that the staff isn't auditing the bills, but the Board of Trustees is supposed to be looking at the backup for all of these in these bills um, on a more regular basis. And so we're trying to figure out a way of doing that and I don't know. Or the alternative is that we designate an auditor to do it. Like you could, this, in the town, they often call it a controller, which may be the process that the Town of America does. I'm not sure.
Town law is different than village law.
I understand. And in town law, they they usually the person that's designated to do it is the controller. In any event, um, I don't think it replaces the 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 staff um, actually doing what they do, which is they go through the bills, they make sure there's a purchase order, they may, they don't pay anything that's not supposed to be paid. It's not really having anything to do with questioning the staff. It's just what the obligation of the with the village of the elected Board of Trustees are. So I I do want to figure out how we can make sure we're complying with what the controller requires or the law requires from the controller's processes. And, um, in a way that's also not burdensome to the staff because I don't think our work would ever replace that of the staff. So that's, I just, I'm putting that, I I'm putting that out there because I I think that's something that, you know, we all need to be mindful of.
Okay, and thank you for sharing it. And I and I would, I would ask the, uh, village attorney because I sometimes I I know at Nikon, uh, they they they're not fully conversed on the village manager form of government that that we labor under. So i- in in light of that, can you, can you do a quick, uh, search to see what our responsibilities are?
Sure. We wonder trustee Lucas was the question, you're right.
Correct. I it was, I was, I was talking to the people in the controller's office, the trainers from the New York State Controller's Office, who would be the first people who would come in and audit our budget, not that they're going to.
Can you send me who you spoke to?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Lucas.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, I need a, uh, a motion to approve the abstract.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And the next up is the abstract of manual vouchers and tonight's grand total is an even 3,000. Any questions or concerns? Nope.
No.
All right, uh, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
This is all about filling up postal gears, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What it looks like. Okay, all right.
It may have different rules according to the controller.
Uh, okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. And I am going to go out of order one more time because we have a staff member here who has been waiting patiently, uh, for her, uh, item to be called. And which is it?
Four B. Four B three.
Four B three. Okay, right. Four B three, a resolution authorizing, uh, transfer for Marine Education Center part-time salaries. Uh, Jerry, you want to give this a little quick? I'll find it. I got it.
That's in the mic, Sally. I'm sorry. That's in the mic. Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
So, um, Mayor Kyle Troy on naturalism sometimes works seven days a week because her schedule is extremely intense and she never says no to a school or a teacher or anyone that wants to educate kids. Um, so what we're doing here is we're moving, um, some money from fees that she has that's extra into some part-time work, uh, part-time salaries, just to make sure that the education center is covered as well as, um, trying to get Kyle a day off here and there. So and I appreciate that very much from her.
So this is all interdepartmental?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is just in her budget.
In her line.
Fees to part-time salaries.
She's raking it in now.
Uh, yeah.
She's raking in the.
Yeah, yeah. That was a mandate, right? Yes, it was a man.
All right, uh, thank you. And I just want to point out the Marine Education Center, as you go into Harbor Island and you go past the Bates Station, it's the first, uh, building on the left. Uh, if you, if you have, uh, small children, uh, and you're looking for a diversion of an hour, uh, it's a great place to take the kids. If you're, uh, have a big kid playing soccer and the little kid's getting antsy, uh, it's it's a great place to go over. Uh, you learn about the environment that surrounds us. Uh, there's so many, uh, children, uh, who grew up in this community and, uh, don't feel a part of the Long Island Sound community because they don't have a house on water and they don't belong to a club. But Kyle, uh, fills that gap for us. And thank you. Okay, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, uh, abstract, resolution, uh, this is for rate. Resolutionary amending fees and charges to add fees to certain land use board and building permit applications. Uh, Mr. Spalzino was talking about this before when we passed the law. Uh, and I'm going to ask, uh, I'm going to ask him to share the mic here and to talk a little bit about where we are with this.
So as I explained earlier, this implements the changes that only in planning departments that talked about it in order to, I mean, accurately reflect costs and worked on each application without unfairly requiring someone to, uh, pay the cost of the building, but never actually gets the building permit review. The other thing this does is it captures a few fees, boards, and applications, etc. That for which they were no longer before. So the cost of processing this, that, and it is, is, uh, it's captured, which does not change the requirement that anyone going to board an application where the the village incurs costs experts has to make an escrow deposit and pay those, uh, costs, uh, as they go.
Uh, it it also captures, uh, public courses, own management used to never have a consistency fee. Right. And so and that that doesn't seem, doesn't seem fair. Okay. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Someone want to make a motion?
Uh, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Uh, the next up is four D. Budget transfer, the first one, authorizing budget transfer for planning department contract service. Uh, four B one. Jerry, what's all about it?
Several months ago, Mayor, um, we asked the board to move some money out of the village manager's contract services and move it into the planning department contract services. Uh, we were going through a period of staff adjustment, um, for the building department and planning department. Um, that, uh, adjustment has been resolved. And so now the village manager is taking back the money that he lent the planning department. Uh, so I can, I need to do.
Is he happy about that?
Yes, yes.
To get points?
Yes. I didn't get any points. It's not permitted in municipal law.
Okay, uh, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, authorizing budget transfer for zoning board attorney. Uh, this is moving, uh, 6,000 from its contingency account, uh, to 6,000 contract services uh, for Lori Lee Dixon, who was our zoning board attorney, uh, because there there were, there were items that were outside her retainer agreement.
And not, and not attributed to escrow.
And not attributed to escrow. Okay.
So will I guess will we be amending her retainer agreement going forward? Or?
We should, but we're not doing that now. We can do that in December if you want to, but not doing that now.
It's just because it's early in the, it's early in the budget season to have to transfer, but it's because there's something that wasn't counted.
Yeah, there was, there was stuff, um, more like questions and, um, issues that the zoning board members had that needed to get needed clarification, that that's where typically it wasn't like that, uh, but I think we've passed that now. So I think we're okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, this, we did this one already. That was Kyle. Uh, the next up is authorization, uh, to execute budget amendment to fund building department supplies. This is a thousand dollars from building department office equipment, uh, transferring to building department supplies. Uh, any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
You can't just borrow them from the planning department, Jerry?
No, you can't.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next up is four B five, uh, authorization to execute budget transfers for water maintenance. Jerry, why don't you explain this a little bit?
Well, Mayor, this resolution and board, um, if you look at the second page, it lists out the one point. Let me get it right. The 1.357 million that the board took out of fund balance out of surplus uh, to use for dredging operations. We have a revised dredging operation now. We do a lot of it ourselves. Uh, but we also, um, use a contractor when we need to. And so we've created and asked the board to consider an 8150 line, which would include, um, um, 65,000 in salaries, 100,000 in overtime, 300,000 in equipment, auto repairs, fuel, uh, materials, and then contract services. Um, everything from, uh, 0110 to 0411 would be, um, would be for our, uh, public works department and staff like Parks and others who would contribute to the river cleaning maintenance program. And then contract services are are individuals like J T Cleary and others.
So this would be a budgetary line dedicated just to flood maintenance.
Right. That's right.
But didn't, didn't we already have something? I mean, I remember when when this first came up, we we found a line in the budget that hadn't been used for a while.
Uh huh. And we, um, we burned through that real quick.
The line still exists.
It does still exist, yeah. And so next.
Is this that?
No, it's a different one. That's 8140. This is 8150.
It's a capital fund.
Okay, got it.
This is a capital. This works a little bit differently than that operating budget.
Okay, I'll gladly make that motion.
Second.
And this is being encumbered, so it's going to, it's going to increase this annual budget because it's being carried over from last year.
But that stays in this as a capital fund.
Okay, fine. It's not going to ever get, okay.
So, so in order to ref- to to put more funds into this, you have to come back to the board to to replanning the capital. It didn't last a few years.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Last a significant period of time.
It will. It will. It's less than significant amount of time.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
And I just want to say, I'm just, just looking at the anecdotally, looking at the river after, after the big rains now, um, it just looks different. It it seems to be running smoother and, uh, and, uh, from all angles? Not from all angles, but I'm, I'm, but from a lot of angles. I mean, I don't know if that's a result of what we're doing or it's just wishful thinking or why.
Uh, it, work, work's being done. I mean, work.
Keep working away.
700, uh, within the last two weeks, we had 700, 700 cubic yards removed from from the rivers. And and before that, it was a lot of river maintenance where, um, our previous P W superintendent didn't want to go in and remove stuff. Um, we had no problem doing that. And we go in and we remove their trees and we remove obstructions and we remove other things. There's items that are items.
Standbumps.
For you. Yeah, items that are going to cover for you that are going to maintain the riverbanks a lot differently than we do now.
What kind of rain event do you think we would that we're wishing for, that we would require before we see demonstration of, uh, of that?
So it's hard. I mean, it, we had, we had the 1.5 inch. We had plenty of room in the rivers, right? You double that, maybe you're starting to get to the, to the top, um, at a three inch rainstorm, but it's hard to tell. I mean, we learned from, from Gino that a hundred year storm and a 500 year storm is a matter of two inches, right? So it's, it's kind of difficult to say. We continue to prepare. We continue to monitor. You saw the the screen, uh, before. We, we're doing everything we can right now. And then when the army board comes in, hopefully they'll, you know, change the way we live around there.
Do what we can, when we can, where we can. Uh, next up is item four C, resolution, uh, working with Westchester County to seek funds for engineering assessment of potential upstream detention and retention options in the Mariner River, Sheldrick River, and the Beaver Brook Swamp. of potential upstream detention and retention options in the Marinac River, Sheldon River, and the Beaver Brook Swamp uh watershed.
Uh, well, this was uh at the last uh work session, the uh the board reviewed the uh request um that was presented in a resolution from the flood mitigation advisory committee uh regarding uh working with the county to study upstream detention of attention options. The board asked the staff to prepare a resolution for its consideration for tonight's meeting.
Another beautifully written resolution, Dan.
I think they they cut my line about the uh flooding, not respecting the imaginary lines.
You know, Jerry, Jerry doesn't think literally. So what what we're doing here is, uh, a- as we all know, the waters that inundate us uh come from Harrison and the town of Maric and uh White Plains and Scarsdale and uh points uh north of here. Uh, we're we're really asking the county to work with us to uh have those communities hold their water on their own property and uh release it, you know, maybe at a time when uh it it isn't endangering the life, safety, and health of the residents of our community. And uh you you think there wouldn't be a lot to ask. But apparently it's been a lot to ask for the past hundred years. Uh, but you know, it's it's another push we have. I I I talked to George Latimer about it. He said, uh, send him the resolution. We're still working on it.
Possibly the next resolution that we can ask for them from them is made it mandating some type of um policy countywide to have better stormwater uh management.
They were talking years ago about having stormwater districts. And uh it actually, uh, Phyllis Whitner, who was the town council person of uh of sainted memory, uh, she worked very, very hard on it and, you know, got pretty close to the goal line. But then but then the the uh upstream communities realized it would cost them a couple of dollars.
Yeah, we got to the point where, and this is the causes PTSD for me because I was pretty much, I was heavily involved with this for Liz with. We had, you know, basically gotten to the point where uh we had legislation uh that we were preparing for the state legislature. And um this was the period when our our former governor, when he was the
Oral Fug.
General was railing against all these levels of government in New York State. And there just wasn't support at the state level to create what was seen as another level of government, even though it really wasn't, but uh I could unfortunately speak for hours about this, but I won't.
Thank you for that, Dan. Uh, I need I need a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
And you know, while we're thinking about this, maybe we can think about asking Harrison again about the road to nowhere while we're well, in the spirit of tri-municipal or multi-municipal cooperation, that might be.
I've asked him a few times and
I know, but we can, I've tried to speak with them. Hope this, so maybe we can, maybe we can enlist our upstream partners and have that as part of a a larger initiative.
Okay, so it's a great idea. 4D, resolution with authorization to execute a professional service agreement to provide third-party administration services to implement affordable housing placement. Uh, this once again was a shared service that we used to have with the town of Maric. Uh, they had a housing authority office and uh they they disbanded it without telling us. And uh I I actually talked to a person uh who received section eight uh voucher. And she says it's very difficult. Now she has to go to White Plains and uh there's no one there to, you know, help her through the process where we used to have somebody in the town of Maric who would help our residents through the process. Uh, but this isn't only about section eight vouchers. It's also about uh like there there are a few developments here in the village that have affordable apartments in them. Uh, but since the town is no longer doing this, we they they couldn't have a way to uh staff it. And not staff it, uh, but put a person who's deserving of affordable housing unit in those uh units because there was no uh mechanism for doing it. So Jerry reached out and uh put out an RFP and there was only one respondent. And that is what is before us. Jerry, great, great.
Uh, no, Mayor, you you captured everything. Uh, the one item that I think trustee Rollins asked me to do was to get uh maybe potentially monthly updates. So I did speak to um the individual, the deputy director here, and I sent you all an email about that. Um, so he has no problem sending monthly updates about the work that WRO is involved with as far as what the other agencies are doing, like the state agency. He doesn't really have access to that information. So we'll have to figure something out, but I think maybe tapping the state agency, it just didn't. I didn't, I didn't know what direction I needed to go in until I talked to him. So I talked to him earlier today.
And it wouldn't affect this contract anyway.
No, no, but he had no problem sharing the information that he has monthly with the board and myself.
That's exactly what it requires.
And this con- and this does not deal with section eight. This is not, this is not, we, it's not helping us manage
No.
or not helping our residents manage section eight.
That's at the state. What this does is it allows this agency to, this nonprofit, to place individuals into affordable housing units, which has not happened since the town disbanded.
Thank you. Uh, I need a motion?
Second.
All in favor? 4E. LMC peg money, we did already. Paving, uh, resolution, uh, raid paving of Orient Avenue from Pretano Lane to West Boston Post Road and the Parkway from Creek Road to South Barry Avenue. Uh, when we finished the uh paving that we were going to do and plan to do in the Village of Maric, there were a few hundred thousand dollars left over in the budget. And these are streets that probably would have been paved next year, but they were they were in said state of disrepair. So we thought, let's just get it done this year. And through advocacy of residents too.
Remaining budget will cover the uh
Both paving jobs. And you you put it out to bid and we got a new bidder.
Correct.
Okay. Questions, concerns?
Oh, uh, but this is another example of uh efficiency and effectiveness.
This is true.
It's really uh really great news.
Need a motion?
Great news there.
I'm moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? 4G, resolution authorization to execute a professional service agreement to provide architectural design services for Columbia Firehouse renovations. Uh, our friend, uh, Jeff An, uh, who is the head of uh the parks department, but is also in charge of all of the village's uh buildings, was in before to talk about uh hiring uh this architect to uh provide the bid documents and uh the plans for the renovation of Columbia Firehouse, which is well in excess of a hundred and twenty-five years old. Any questions or concerns?
Nope.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next up, 4H. Uh, is author is authorizing Chief DeRusa uh to travel uh for a conference to California. Uh, this, the board of trustees has to do it because it's over a certain amount, right, Jerry?
That's correct, thanks.
Okay, so this is uh $2,344.60 uh for Chief DeRusa to go to a the chief's Association of Police Chiefs Conference in San San Diego on October fourteenth through October seventeenth. Uh, the chief explained to us before uh the the many uh different areas that she will be educated in. And uh we think it's a great job and uh she is doing a great job and this will uh help her uh stay on the cutting edge of police work. So I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Now, I need a motion to add an item to the agenda. And the item that we are going to be adding to the agenda is the tan payment uh for the library. So first I need a motion to add the item to the agenda. All in favor? As many of you know, the uh the library was uh teetering on uh the brink of insolvency a few months back. And uh board of trustees uh has helped them out uh by uh passing a tax anticipation note, which was the only vehicle we found legally that we could use uh to help them out. We could not just give them funds or lend them money uh from our general account because of the way New York State uh municipal law works. So we decided to give them the money in three tranches. Uh, this is the second installment and at each tranche, they had to meet uh certain uh goalposts, as it were. And they were they were here before uh and uh clearly explained that they had met the goalpost that we had set out for them. They had a meeting last week with uh trustee Young and uh village manager Verastro and uh clerk treasurer Augie Fusco and uh and Augie, Augie uh came up.
Village manager Verastro.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's an honor. Are you kidding me?
He was a good man himself.
Yeah.
A good man himself. Uh, village manager Barbario, I'm sorry about that. And clerk treasurer, uh, Augie Fusco. Uh, and Augie came up with a uh a great idea about how they could pay us back uh and make us whole in a more timely fashion. And the library seems like they're gonna go along with it. So I I know my goal, and I think that goal is shared by every member of this board, was A, to keep the library open. And so that was a success. And, you know, people forget because people have the, you know, a two-week memory these days uh that it was it was not a done deal that they were gonna stay open. Uh, and B, that the village has a plan to recover the money that we uh fronted. So uh this meets all those requirements. And uh I I'm glad that, you know, trustee Young uh was adamant in uh ha- having to meet those requirements. I think it helped them and it helped us. So as if the resolution uh for the ten was uh just forwarded to us, you've all seen it. Uh, I need a motion.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Great, thank you all very much. Uh, the next up is the last uh opportunity to address the board, and I'm gonna talk for three minutes. Okay. Okay, great. Uh, report from village manager, we did already. Report from clerk treasurer, I don't
To report.
Thank you, Augie. Report from Mr. Village Attorney? All right, uh, very few minutes, uh, minutes of the parks and work committee from June 7th, 2023. With that, uh, I will entertain them. Oh, I just want to remind everybody, uh, this this Saturday in Harbor Island Park is the monarch butterfly festival.
Almost forgot on purpose.
No, 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 no. And I I and and Jerry, Jerry likes to point out that I am officially the monarch butterfly mayor. I actually had to join an organization and uh this this uh this allows the uh Committee for the Environment to participate in a program nationwide to save the monarch butterfly, which is very important to our ecosystem. Uh, so there'll be there'll be activities for the kids. There'll be uh that they hand out uh plants and stuff that you can plant in your uh garden to uh help the pollinators. The Village of Maric now has a a community flower. It's the milkweed, which is the favorite flower of the monarch butterfly.
And there'll be an opportunity to take pictures that the committee members made six-foot
Yes. And you can you can I'm gonna get the six-foot butterfly wings, put them on.
Bless.
Posted on the local one I U E C elevated union page.
Also, we'll be there. And if it rains, rain day to Sunday.
Yeah, we look good.
Looks good, but there is
We obsess about the rain around here.
We had a rough weekend, but uh all's well that ends well. All right, thank you all very much. I need a motion for adjourned?
The move.
Second.
All in favor? Have a good weekend. Have a good week, the rest of the week.